Good evening. Welcome to the October 15th, 2018 Regular City Council Meeting. The official hour is 6 o'clock and we're going to go ahead and get started. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, here. Councilmember Gonzalez, here. Councilmember Hammack, here. Councilmember Hockes, here. Councilmember Meisner, here. Councilmember Turner, here. Mayor Pro Tem Smith, absent. Mayor Troutman, here.
Would you please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is unified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do, uh...we have several people want to speak. Is there any issue on the agenda that we should wait or have them come up to the microphone now?
Is there some issue, some, or not?
What I'm referring to, if we have an item on the agenda that you requested to speak about, we'd like to hold off until that time. We have the sex offender ordinance that will be coming up, so let's wait until that is discussed by council. Sex offender, BLM oil and gas, is there something on the agenda regarding that? Okay. BLM oil and gas, uh...sex offender, let me sort these out. The only one I can see is Mr. Turner here. He wants to talk about, is it sheet problems or street problems? Street. Street, would you like to address us at this time, Mr. Turner? Mr. Turner was longtime former mayor, long, long time ago.
Ah, George.
George. Go ahead, you've got three minutes.
Three minutes. Good evening and thank you for hearing me.
Is your mic on, George? Okay, okay.
Apparently, I'll do the best I can. Yeah, I'm here because I've got a problem right at my house on Vine Street and there was a big hole developed there in the road and the street department did come down and haul in some gravel at one time and kind of filled it up, but they didn't fill it all the way up. Well, it continued to be a hole and every time there was moisture, it would fill with water and we had rain here a while back and of course the thing filled with water, the street department came down and graded the road, which is appreciated. However, what they plowed out of that hole was really soupy mud and they made a wind roll across my driveway and in front of my property. It's so bad that the daily record delivery person won't put the paper in the paper tube anymore, they just throw it out in the mud. And so I decided as long as I was going to be here before city council this evening, I would ask if it's possible to get even some more gravel hauled in there and get that hole filled up so I don't have that problem anymore.
Okay. We can do that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, George. All right, so the other ones will be taken care of when we talk about the items that are on the agenda and of course the BLM lease and the sex offender discussion. Okay. Any council member announcements, discussions? Quiet.
Vision committee meeting Wednesday at 4 o'clock.
Okay. 4 o'clock here at this building. Anyone else? Okay, well, let's move right along then. We have recognition and presentations. We would like to have the, uh...where is it?
Oh, I also have something else.
Yes, Ms. Gonzalez, the late.
Two things coming up this weekend. The pasta party for the chamber, raising funds for scholarships in our area, and then also search and rescue trivia night, held at the, both are held at the Abbey.
Harrison School.
Oh, Harrison School, I'm so sorry. So, if you're interested.
What time is that?
Pasta party is at 6 o'clock and the search and rescue, hmm? Five, six o'clock? I'm, thank you, Ed. I'm so glad you know your stuff.
He does that?
No, I need his help.
He does a great weather report, too, so, okay.
Did he predict the snow?
He predicted the snow. I'd like to invite Roxanne Bradshaw from the Fremont School and Public Employees Retirement Association to come forward. We have a presentation. Would you please give us your names, all three of you?
Thank you very much and thank you all the members of the council for having us here this evening. My name is Roxanne Bradshaw and I'm joined by my co-president, Donna Murphy, and our member, Linda August. And it is really our privilege to bring a check to you this evening and the presentation of which should signify that the amount being $132,281 and the 50 cents, I want you to note, very important, this amount depicts the dollar amount which would be due to unpaid volunteer hours which are contributed by public employee retirees. The public employee retirees in this area include State of Colorado employees, Department of Corrections, all school districts, including the community colleges, firefighters, and the judicial system. The total number of PERA active and retired members who reside in Fremont County is 5,400 individuals. As retirees who receive PERA benefits, we have chosen to reside here in Canyon City and in the greater area of Fremont County. As retired residents of this community, our benefits total over $70 million coming back into this community annually. We are pleased this evening to be able to let you know how many hours our volunteers have helped with in this beautiful city and this county and we hope to make this contribution again next year and thank you so much. And I want to also say during the past year, the co-presidents were Kay Gouldy, who we lost when she and her hubby moved away, but they're coming back, and Shar Lindner. And it was during their office that this year's benefits that we present to you now were earned by our members. So I thank you so very much and appreciate the kind attention of the council.
Thank you. Thank you to all your members, you certainly are a credit to our community and we would like, go ahead, I'm sorry ma'am. Donna.
Well, thank you very much, wearing a different hat for the Community Advisory Group. We have a meeting Thursday from 6 to 8 p.m., the annual EPA meeting, and at the Abbey. And Colorado Legacy Land will be giving us some of their thoughts and John Hammack's aware of that. And then I'm going to give Frank a, the Fremont School and Public Employees Retirement Association brochure.
So he can join.
Yes. So he can join.
Okay. Why don't we come down front, Carrie, would you like to take a picture of us? A check, can we cash that tonight?
Sorry to cash. Sorry to be cashed.
Would you like to step up to the microphone, distinguished Mr. Ed Norton and Mr. George Turner and Mr. T-
And George Small. George Small is the past district governor-
Yes.
-of District 5470 of, uh, southern two-thirds of Colorado.
Wow, how many members would that be?
A lot, it would be about 2,200.
Wow, that's great. You have a good organization.
And George Turner has been secretary of the Canyon City Rotary Club far longer than he was ever mayor.
Oh, okay. Wow. That's gotta be a long time. Do you have a presentation that you would like to-
No, I don't.
You don't?
Uh, we, we just want to say appreciation, of course, we did our formal ceremony out at Centennial Park, uh, what, about two, three weeks ago? Rex suggested we be here tonight. Rex Brady. And I think from a Rotary standpoint, we're excited about the fact that there's such a identification with the Canyon City Rotary Club with the new pavilion because it speaks very loudly of our organization and I think, I mean, years ago, we funded the construction of the fountain in Veterans Park and of course there's a plaque there that denotes the fact that Rotary contributed that, but the pavilion, I think, will make a very loud statement as to Rotary's contributions to the community. And so we were pleased to present that check to you of, what, over $29,000 here a few weeks ago.
So again, thank you. You have cemented the Rotary Club and all of you individuals for history for Canyon City and our futures and yours are very much linked together and we really do appreciate what you have done, what you've done for our parks, well, for our people of Canyon City. We thank you, it's a great organization that you have there and that was 29,000 and some dollars and if you haven't seen the-
Maybe that did make it to the city coffers when I gave you that check, didn't it?
We think so.
Yes, of course it did. Yes, it did. No, I, yes, you did, you gave me the check there, so. It did get it, right, Harry?
It's all deposited.
It's been deposited, right. So, you have a copy of the check right here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I always enjoy going out to your luncheons and you can grill me properly there, which you do, with good humor and I appreciate that so very much, but again, thank you for being part of our community and for helping us as you've done.
May I make a point of personal privilege on another topic?
Yes, sir.
To follow on Councilwoman Gonzalez's note about the eighth annual Fremont Search and Rescue Trivia Night, this Saturday, we certainly, I think, have room for a City of Canyon City trivia team. Unless one has already been formed.
It's in the works.
It's in the works, all right.
And if you need contact, go to fremontsar.com to get signed up.
Sounds like a promo spot.
Excuse me?
I said that sounded like a promo spot.
It is. All in support of Fremont Search and Rescue.
Great.
Kathy Heron and I have developed the questions and we think we'll have a lot of fun.
Don't be surprised if you see us there.
All right, great.
Thank you for the invite.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, organization, so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to call forward Mr. Brent Hargrave and Harry and the people that you brought with you. Could you just come down front here where Harry Patel, Mr. Patel is sitting and would you-
Go forward, come on down. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sit down. Very steep, you bumped out of the seat.
When the music quits, you'll have to sit down. All right. Gentlemen, I've asked you here, we asked you here, just to say hello and thank you for taking care of our largest asset the City of Canyon City has and get to know who is in charge up there. I know at times you probably think no one's in charge, but there is, obviously. And would you like to start off, Mr. Hargrave and Brent, or-
I'll start.
-give you your position out there and tell us about it.
Sure, I'll start off. My name is Brent Hargrave, I'm COO at the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park. Harry Hargrave is our CEO at the Royal Gorge. Jerry Nines on the end is our general manager and controller. Jerry's been with the park for 12 years, he's been the controller for 12 years. When Mike Bandera became general manager emeritus position, Jerry assumed the role of general manager for Royal Gorge Bridge and Park. And then to my right here is Jeremy Boswell. He is the vice president of operations. Basically, he's in charge of everything from an operational standpoint, rides, maintenance, in-park services, anything that doesn't involve the numbers, Jeremy pretty much oversees. Jeremy comes to us from Tulsa, Oklahoma. He was, he started the park in August of 2017. He's been doing a great job and we're very excited to continue working with Jeremy and see where he can take us operationally, so. And then Harry has some numbers and would like to give you guys a little bit of overview of the year in review from a fiscal standpoint.
Thank you, Brent. The two on the other side of Brent are excellent examples of the 216 employees at the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park. They lead that team and they're doing a wonderful job. I think, I've been involved for a number of years and I do believe that this is the best management team we've had in a long time. They're wonderful people, they care very much about the community and they live in the community and they look very much forward to many future years of service to the community and service to the Royal Gorge. This year, our revenues are up approximately 8 percent, depends on the week, but 7 to 8 percent. The amount of money in our lease that the city will receive as of January the 15th of this coming year will be $2,707,841. That is approximately $176,000 more than last year. We're very pleased to tell you that. We've already paid a big portion of it, I think about $1,617,000 is already in the city coffers. And these two people at the far end, Jerry and Jeremy, are largely responsible for that. Couple of other interesting numbers besides what I've said. We spend about $875,000 a year marketing Canyon City and the Royal Gorge region. We see our marketing is something that hopefully enables the rest of the community to prosper and adds to the attendance all around the country. Our attendance comes from, of course, Colorado. The largest market we penetrate into is probably Denver. We have a large contingent of people from California that visit the park. Probably the second largest is Houston, Texas, can you believe it? But they want to get out of all that heat and humidity. And then Dallas, Fort Worth are big markets for the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park. Our attendance this year will be around 365,000 people. I think we did around 354,000 last year, so it's up about 2 percent. And in this marketplace, when I'm saying marketplace, I'm talking about the entertainment business in general all around the United States, just to be up is a real positive thing. Entertainment business has suffered a little bit, especially the theme park business over the last 12 months. We are in, looking at improvements and changes to the park. Mainly, they are in a cultural and/or natural setting enhancement. We're looking at a lot of things related to, to making the place greener, cooler, more comfortable for our guests, and enjoyable. I'm not prepared to tell you the specifics of what we're going to add to the property, mainly because we haven't finalized the decision, that'll probably come in January or February. But next May, the park will appear a bit different and hopefully more pleasing to everybody's eyes. Brent and I both have a philosophy of being what you are and the Royal Gorge does a bridge and park does a wonderful job of expressing itself as to the nature in which it sits and the beauty and amazing technology related to that bridge. So we will try to enhance those types of things in the coming years, for your benefit, for the city's benefit, and for our employees' benefit. That's pretty much all I have to say is there, and we're here to answer questions, we'll even give Jerry Nines and Jeremy Boswell's phone numbers out. But feel free to ask us any questions and we'll try to answer them as best we can right now.
Thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Hargrave. Are there any questions, council? Ms. Gonzalez?
So, you talked about the areas where most of your patrons come from. Do you, do you feel that that's where you market the most? Is in Texas, in-
California, Texas, no. Our primary market's Colorado.
Okay.
And most of what we do is focused on being pleasing and interesting to the Colorado market. Our secondary markets are those that I mentioned, out of state. And obviously, we are still an automobile-driven organization and in a way, times of, the current times work against us for that reason because we don't have large airports within 30 miles of our location. But, yeah, that is the primary market spectrum of what we work in, those markets that I mentioned. Get a great response from locals, from Canyon City and Florence and, of course, everything nearby, all the communities nearby.
Okay. I just wondered if that was new, if there was more marketing happening this year?
So much of our marketing has to do with internet.
Uh-huh.
And so much has changed in the last 20 years. People using Google, Google Analytics and working on their websites significantly will spend a good bit of money and time this year working on that.
Yes, most of our advertising is in the form of billboards, which you guys see here in Canyon City. We also do have a few billboards in Texas for people that are coming up to 25. And then we also do a lot of, a great deal of digital marketing. Digital marketing is probably, is about 50 percent or more of our marketing budget.
I've seen several, like, I've seen one at a Sky Sox game in Colorado Springs.
Yes, we partnered with Sky Sox this year.
There's a flashing ad on I-25 between Denver-
Castle Rock.
Castle Rock, yeah.
That's a brand-new digital billboard.
That was a coup because those digital signs pop and they really are nice.
I go, oh, that's the gorge.
Yeah. And, you know, there are nuances to that type of advertising. In the past, we've made some mistakes and we've had script on our signs that were too small to read, you know? And so we're trying to declutter our signs but make it more appropriate to calling people's attention to that bridge. And then after they see bridge, they get online and they come back and find out what we are, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any council members?
I just have one question. I heard a rumor that you might be rebuilding the incline drain down to the bottom of the gorge, is that true?
I better take that one.
That might be one of the rumors.
I missed that.
Yeah, you know, that is a very difficult situation. We want to do that very badly. And the reason we want to do it, not only because the community desires it and many people remember quite fondly going down that railing, but also because we want people to get closer to the water. You know, you look down at the water and you experience that water and that's a piece of nature that's so important to our existence. It's what the water has done over thousands of years, so. The reality is, we put in the zip line, we put in new gondolas, we've now spent another $2 million on a water system and we don't have the money to build that incline. The incline would cost us, based on our-
12.
Yeah, 10 to 12 million dollars. And, you know, if the city wants to pay for it. But we have not given up hope of figuring out ways to get people down the incline path to the water. We think it makes sense economically and all other ways and we're still investigating trams and other types of motorized apparatus to get you down. We've even thought about creating hiking paths down there so people could hike down, but we were afraid we couldn't hike them up. You know, that's pretty steep.
Yeah, it would be a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah. But we haven't given up hope that we're going to come upon something in the next four, five years that satisfies everybody's need to get down to the water.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
I just have a quick comment. Every time my family comes to visit, we always take them to the bridge and it's such a wonderful experience every time we go. It never gets old, we always enjoy going and everybody that I take there just loves it, so, you know, I really do appreciate you guys having such a wonderful thing in our community.
Well, thank you. You can thank these two people over here because the smiles you see are because of them.
Well, thank you.
I do have one more question. Are you guys there day in and day out, then? Yeah, okay, all right, good.
Okay, anyone else? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Call us with any questions in the future, we're always available to you.
Thank you.
We look forward to the second check.
Good to see you.
Okay, then we are going to ask for the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Could I have the city administrator review the consent agenda? The items.
Mayor and council, consent item 8A would be approval minutes for the special city council meeting of September 25th, 2018. 8B would authorize street closure from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. on October 27th, 2018 for the Chamber of Commerce Spooktacular Event on Main Street between 5th and 8th. 8C would authorize the mayor to sign a license agreement with the Fremont Conservation District to allow them to enter upon our land and release liability. The landing question is the land adjacent to our water storage facility at Dawson Ranch so they could reduce the fuel content up there related to forest fires, so that wildland urban interface is really critical in that particular location. This gives them the right to get on our property and thin out and remove a lot of wildfire fuel. 8D would, is the listing of bills and we added 8E and that would authorize the mayor to sign a agreement for soccer field with the Canyon City Youth Soccer Association which allowed them to apply and also, more importantly, receive a grant. There's a pending grant of $15,000 to $17,000 that they can receive from the Colorado Soccer Association for the improvements and rehabilitation of the north field at Mountain View Park. And it requires a non-exclusive priority use. This effectively really just codifies the practice and the protocol over the last 20 years where they've always been given priority use of that field, but it needs to be memorialized in agreement so the state soccer association knows that the money they're investing is going to be used by the local soccer club, so that's the purpose of that. Any questions?
Mr. Meisner?
I apologize for not questioning this, Tony, earlier, but in terms of the list of bills-
Yes.
-the cattle guards, is that part of the fence award or is that a separate expenditure?
It's part of that $50,000 budget, but it's a separate expenditure in conjunction with the county. We've paid them to install one of the cattle guards, we're installing the other, but that's the capital and implementation cost of doing that. But it's part of the $50,000, not in addition.
But wasn't the $50,000 a fence bid?
Yeah, but it's part of that overall project.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Ms. Gonzalez?
Okay, on the budget or the, I lost it. KiWit infrastructure, $516,937. Which project was this for and-
Two-way.
Yeah, I mean, which?
That was, that was a release of the contingency for last year. Yes, we held that money until the project was finally approved, so that's a release of that deposit effectively.
Really, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the Spooktacular Event, does it matter that not all the businesses signed off on it? You don't think everybody's-
No, it's been a traditionally well-received event. No, it's been a traditionally well-received event. We'd like to encourage all the businesses to be actively involved. It's a huge turnout of both adults and kids, and we wish all of the stores would be open. It's a fantastic opportunity for them to showcase their services and products and would hope that they would take full advantage of it because it's a great crowd.
Anyone else? They don't ask for a motion in a second from counsel. Ms. Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, where are we?
Approved.
That we approve the consent agenda for October 15th, 2018.
Second?
Second. Any discussion on that mo, Mr. Meisner?
I would suggest you amend that to include the agenda.
Oh. Should I just say the whole thing again?
You can say just, yes.
Yes.
Yes, agree to that. Thank you. That also includes the approval of the minutes and everything, and the agenda that we're working on tonight.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
I wanted to move that we would delay discussion of item number 11 to allow some time to get some advice from city attorney on that ordinance.
Okay, so essentially, we want to take that off of the agenda that, exclude that from the agenda that we're approving as of tonight.
Correct.
So...
Do you still want to hear from...
I'll second.
I kind of want to hear from some of our constituents also.
We can still do that, we're just not going to, we can talk to the chief, we can talk to the constituents that are here for more information for our decision or possibly amendment to that ordinance. That's the way I would look at it.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
That's what we're after, we're after more input.
Yes, more information, okay.
Okay. Do we agree to that? Okay. So we're including, we are approving the consent agenda. The agenda excluding the discussion of number 11 will be taken off, off the agenda, removed, right?
Correct.
Correct?
That was my motion, yes.
But we're still going to have the discussion from everybody here that's here tonight.
Yeah, folks have come out, so I think we should hear from them.
Okay. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Does that ban us from talking about it amongst ourselves?
I don't know how you're going to do that if you don't have the agenda item.
Can we just make a motion to decide after conversation?
Or can we table it after discussion?
After discussion, I believe we can make a motion to...
Postpone.
To postpone action on this ordinance until some later date.
And I'm going, then I will pose a discussion item for the sex offender rules. Okay?
Okay. Can we ask for direction from the attorney?
So I think you're going to keep it on the agenda, but you're kind of indicating that you're not going to take any action, but you still want to hear from the public. So that's fine, just postpone the first reading till, whenever you're ready.
Right. So essentially, we are postponing the first reading because we're looking for more...
But not discussion.
But not discussion, no. We will, I will allow discussion.
Thank you, Catherine.
Okay. Does everybody understand that patchwork motion?
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay. And it's been seconded by Frank?
Yes.
Any more discussion on that? Would you call the roll then?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Unanimously carries.
Okay. Then, I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing to change the location of a retail liquor license, a tavern license for the Bean Peddler LTD located at 420 Main Street to 412 Main Street, Canyon City. The public hearing is now open. Could I have a staff report? Go.
Everything was turned in, completed, and ready to go. We didn't get anything negative for a reason for changes.
And Scott, would you like to comment or field questions from the council?
Yeah, I'm ready for questions.
Okay. Any questions of council?
I have a question. Are your operations changing at all as far as what you're doing or you're just moving?
Just moving.
Okay.
You know, they used to be together. You know, I bought the building some time ago, so been slowly, slowly transitioning.
Okay.
With that, do we have to ask Scott the questions that we normally ask about licensing and...
Yeah, so when you change the location, it's the same standard as a new license? So yes, you do have to treat it, you almost treat it like a new license.
Okay.
Yep, so you have, need to ask those questions.
Okay, would someone like to go ahead and, Mr. Meisner, go ahead.
Hi.
Are you familiar with Colorado Liquor Code?
I am.
Will there be a copy of the liquor code on file in your establishment?
Yes, I'd keep a copy.
How many employees do you expect to have?
Five, maybe 10 in one day if we can continue to grow, yeah.
How will they be trained on liquor code and liquor laws?
So the current employees have been into the city with the state training.
How did you acquire the signatures on the petitions you submitted?
So I left them for my customers to sign, and then I visited with my immediate neighbors.
Did you make any contact with the residents or business owners in the immediate vicinity of your proposed establishment?
Again, I met with both adjacent business owners on my side of the street.
What was their responses?
They actually signed them as customers, so I just went in to double-check.
Are you feel, are you fully aware that you were responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your business and result in suspension or revocation of your liquor license?
I am.
Anything else you want to share with us?
No, pretty routine, just looking forward to being done.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I need to know where to get my coffee. Are you moving the coffee shop as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and hopefully it's not at the 11th hour, but it's just, when you do the work yourself, it takes forever.
I know, you've been in there working, working your tail off, I know. Looks nice.
Thanks, thanks.
Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion in a second. Mr. Meisner?
Mayor and council, I move that we approve the...
Change of location.
Change of location for the retail liquor license, retail liquor tavern license for the Bean Peddler LTD located at 420 to 412 Main Street, Canyon City, Colorado.
Second, second, okay.
Ms. Turner, second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel.
Good luck, Doug.
Thank you.
Good luck. Now, item number 10 is the public hearing on the City of Canyon City 2019 proposed budget. Now we know why Mr. Patel is here, as usual. I'd like to open up a public hearing for that. Could we have a staff report?
I'll provide that. Give a broad overview of the budget, particularly for the public that's both here and watching on television. Try to do, provide a snapshot of our budget and want to make it clear the budget is online, so if people want to see the detail, they can simply go to our website or visit Harry if they want a physical copy of it. The proposed 2019 budget is at $36.6 million. It's balanced, it's prudent, and most importantly, it responds to the needs expressed by the council and those driven by the citizen survey, which is public safety, economic development, you know, roads and infrastructure, property acquisition, parks, and stormwater. The budget represents in 2019 a $5.5 million increase, which is significant, 17% of our last year. But before I get into the details of that, I want to highlight some of the revenues that is behind the budget. Most people would anticipate in working in the municipal sector that the property tax would be the single largest source of revenue for the city. In our case, that is not true. It only represents about 4% of our general government fund, but more importantly, only about 4% of what people in Canyon City spend on all their property tax jurisdictions, whether it be the school district, the fire district, the rec district. We only represent 4 cents of every dollar you spend on property taxes. So it's exceedingly low. So how do we achieve a balanced budget? Our single largest source of revenue is the sales tax, again, paid for by people that shop and dine, but also from our visitors, which is a very critical element of our economy. $7.4 million. The bridge, who is just here, generates, they mentioned, $2.7 million for the city. That is 700% more than what we receive in property tax. So it gives you some sense of what the property tax levy would have to be, a 700% increase if it weren't for the bridge and the revenue we receive. So it's an enormous benefit to the greater community. And then we receive, of course, about $6.8 million from water-related operations and fees, and then, of course, $3.5 million of 2A money, which is the one cent of the sales tax dedicated to our road improvements. Those are the single largest sources. The budget overall is made up of a series of funds, so you can just consider the city having a host of little baskets of funds. The largest one that most people can relate to because it represents core services like police and public works is our general fund, and that's $11.7 million. The park improvement fund deals, of course, with our parks, is $1.4 million. The general capital fund is significant, and we'll talk a little more about that because almost 36% of this budget is capital improvements, which is exceedingly large because it reflects the need for capital improvements in this community, but also without any significant debt related to that. It's almost all cash paid for, so pay-as-you-go financing on capital, which, again, is unusual. Most cities would incur debt if they were funding 36% of their budget on capital investments. We'll underscore that a little more. Enterprise funds, which consist of, these are self-sufficient funds, they're going concerns, they have to basically achieve a balance, they can't be subsidized, so that's the water fund, stormwater fund. So they generate services and they receive in return fees for those services. Enterprise fund is the capital investments we make, both for the water system, replacing lines, and the stormwater we're proposing this year. And then there's a debt service related to that. And finally, our self-insurance fund, which is predominantly our medical plan, and we're proud to say that in almost every jurisdiction, whether it be private or public in this country, medical plan costs are going up on average of 8% to 10% annually. Ours is flat, and this is the second year in a row. That speaks largely to our commitment by our employees to live a healthy lifestyle, to minimize their healthcare costs because it's very unprecedented to have two consecutive years of zero growth in your health plan costs. This is one of the single most expensive elements of providing public services now is meeting the needs of the health insurance of our employees. And the same is true in the private sector. Of the $5.5 million increase, 2/3 of that is related to two issues. One is a proposal, we'll talk about, $8 million proposed over three years for stormwater infrastructure improvements. We've gotten significant feedback from the public, both in person and in our survey, that there is a great need to address our stormwater problems in the city, the flooding and the damage it does, particularly to property. The city conscientiously made a decision decades ago only to generate revenue sufficient to comply with federal stormwater and pollution standards and not generate sufficient monies to really fix the problem. And so this is proposed, really start attacking the problem at its core, and that is making infrastructure improvements to mitigate the adverse impacts of excessive stormwater. Second piece of that, and that's roughly almost $2 million, and then the second major piece is property acquisition. Again, we've got a strong desire on the part of the public to look at opportunities, particularly along the Arkansas River Corridor, to acquire property, whether it be for future development or parking, so that we're positioned in the future for successful economic opportunities along our river corridor, much like Salida, Buena Vista. We need to take advantage of that river corridor, not continue to turn our back to it. And that's $1.2 million in potential property acquisitions there. Other incremental increases that are significant, the water fund, to keep pace with the 2A road construction, we need to replace water lines, so there's an incremental increase there of almost $600,000. They'll spend over $1 million this year, but it's an incremental increase. In addition to restoring, we have a 5 million gallon water tank out in Four Mile that needs to be rehabilitated. It's been 20 years that it's been in service, so that's an expensive proposition. Potential contribution, assuming that the lodging tax increase, which is on the ballot this November passes, the city is proposing to match the revenue generated there. We talked about the importance of not only the bridge, but more importantly, sales tax. A lot of our sales tax revenue is paid for by visitors who contribute money but don't really consume services, so we love them. But it's not just the money they spend on lodging, the disproportionate amount of money they spend is really is on retail, local retail, food establishments, restaurants, and gas stations. So everyone really benefits by our visitors, not just the lodging community. In fact, they only represent about 26% of the money that the visitor spends. The other 75% is spent on local businesses, so it's really critical to our economy. We have a new police annex donated to us that was worth over $700,000, but it is a 30-year-old facility, it needs upgrades, so we're proposing incremental phase improvements over the next four years. The first phase would be for $200,000 to support the needs of our police department. And then finally, the only personnel additions we're proposing this year, and that's to the Parks Department, largely to properly maintain our cemetery. For example, we have 10,000 headstones we have to weed eat and mow every week during the summer. That is a huge task, we simply don't have adequate staff to do that now, even with the seasonal employees, so that will help them in the long run. In addition to that, the budget is focused on the core services that the public wants, and that is largely public safety, police, and public works, people taking care of our roads. Those are the core services. 50% of our general fund expenditures are just for those two functions. So we don't get into a lot of fund services, we get into core services. As I mentioned, the single largest expenditure of the $36 million is $13.5 million for capital improvements. That's an unprecedented investment on the part of this city, and virtually all of it, with the exception of the stormwater piece, is cash-funded. So kudos to Harry for managing the city's finances to reserve that kind of cash over time so we can make these investments without incurring significant long-term debt. We will be using to finance the $13.5, $875,000 excess general fund reserves and $1.1 million from the water fund reserves. So the single largest project, of course, is 2A. We've budgeted $3.5 million. But as you know, we'll probably have to amend the budget after the first year. Once we know how much we've expended this year, we'll probably not spend $3.5 million this year because we changed the process for letting out those contracts. So the excess will be forwarded to next year, so we'll probably be looking at closer to a $5.8 million 2A series of improvements next year, which is great. Some of the streets that are proposed, once these projects are bid out, we'll know exactly which ones will be built, but Main Street between 9th and 14th, over by the middle school, 12th Street between College Ave to Royal Gorge Boulevard, South 4th Street over by the elementary school between Ellsworth Avenue to Dalmatian Drive, Myrtle Lane also close to the school. This would include sidewalks, which don't exist right now for those school kids, and waterline improvements would be South 4th to South 7th. Forge Road from Bellas Corridor, roughly where the gas station is, all the way up to Evelyn Drive, and then Harding from 5th to 9th Streets. So got a pretty robust series of proposed 2A improvements for next year, assuming all the money comes into play. Stormwater improvements, over the last 10 years, the city has only spent a fraction of what the needs are. We have a $75 million backlog of stormwater needs, and that does not include the capital needs for Dawson Ranch because that, they weren't included in the original estimate, so the number is clearly probably in excess of $80 million. What we're proposing is a three-year commitment of $8 million. The first year would be $1.5 million. The bulk of that would be $1 million for Dawson Ranch for culvert upgrades, and the balance would be using the design of projects for the next two years. As you well know, these are very complex, sophisticated capital improvements, so designs will have to take place this next year to get them in a position to be constructed the following year. We're going to continue with our road resurfacing as our, kind of our preventative maintenance focus, almost $400,000 to do another five center lane miles of roads in the city with chip seal and crack seal. Centennial Park has already enjoyed over $1 million of investment by this council over the last two years, things like the splash pad, the pavilion, the new events lawn, the new playground. Clearly, this is a crown jewel park, and we want to continue to enhance that. We're proposing over half a million dollars... We're proposing over half a million dollars for Phase 2, which would deal with the roads and the parking, and maybe some field upgrades. And I know the committee is going to meet again to reexamine exactly what you want to try to do next year, and then we'll bring that plan back to you, but clearly, the funding is available to do continued significant improvement. I mentioned the rehab of that 5-million-gallon water tank out at Four Mile, that will cost $950,000. So if you want to go into business, go into water tank rehabilitation work. The Canyon City Middle School intersection sidewalk improvements, we've got planned for half a million dollars, that will be a nice enhancement to that school and the safety of those kids. U.S. pedestrian crossing design, the council almost a year ago gave the green light to propose a series of mini medians and landscaping from 1st to 9th. We're just waiting for C.DOT to give you the green light now to design it, and the funding we've scheduled here is proposed for $650,000. Lincoln School Safe Routes to School, again, more curb and sidewalk improvements on South 4th Street and Myrtle Lane, that's almost, it's 363,000. We know, we had a county commissioner here that was interested in this, unfortunately left, but we are going to upgrade the Red Canyon Temple Canyon Park Road. They're basically in a third-world condition, we'd at least upgrade them to make them serviceable for the public to get access to those great facilities. The police annex I mentioned at 200,000. All this is being done while still, thanks to Harry and the finance staff, maintaining a very healthy operating reserve for the city, so we're not depleting our cushion of financial reserves, and it's in compliance with the city council's voted upon financial management plan, which you want 20% to 30% operating reserves in all your funds. I can tell you, for most cities, their policy is traditionally about 16%, so you have a much higher level of reserve requirements than most cities, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that you're not relying on property tax, which for most cities, is their single largest source of revenue, which is a very stable source of revenue. You know, property values, with the exception of the Great Recession, do not change very much. You're dependent on the sales tax, which is much more volatile, it's a much more direct indicator of the economy, so as a result, you need higher reserves to weather any fluctuations in the economy. So to that end, the total city reserves are at 8.3 million, or 37% of your total expenditures, so that exceeds your 20% to 30% threshold. The general fund operating reserves are at 3 million, or at 24%, so again, within your threshold. The water fund's at 1.6 million, or at 31% in excess of your threshold. The self-insurance reserve is very healthy, at 1.1 million, or at 48% of your reserves. The only fund that is not in compliance is the stormwater reserve, it's only at 7%. And again, you know, the council's trying to improve that, but that can't happen overnight. We're not proposing a rate increase, which was recommended by our consultant last year, and we talked about incrementally increasing that rate for most water customers using, which are the average of 10,000 gallons per month. That rate increase would have been 9%, and for commercial users, it would have been closer to 10%. We're proposing, and you could certainly alter the course of this, because of the proposed increase to the stormwater fee, which is roughly $4.23 per month for residential customers, and $9, excuse me, $21.79 for our commercial customers, we felt we could defer one year, but one year only, but the council may want to talk about that and maybe redirect us if you think that's important, because one of the key things is we cannot continue to fall behind on the water rates, because it's incumbent upon those rates to be sufficient to produce the capital to keep pace with our 2A road projects. We'll stifle that whole succession of road improvements unless we get sufficient funds for waterline replacements. That's kind of a capsulated version of our budget. Again, if people want to see the budget, which is about three inches thick in detail, visit our website, and feel free to call me or Harry, or if you want a physical copy, we'll provide that. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Meiser?
In terms of revenue, what did you use as a sales tax increase?
3%.
Historically, have we not used any increase at all?
No, we've traditionally had small incremental increases, roughly 3%, that's pretty common. I think the only time we didn't achieve that was probably during the recession.
I have multiple questions, but go around.
Ask away.
John's it.
What? Oh, John, Mr. Hammer.
Thank you. The, so, this is a general question, so we're looking at having to raise water rates to cover 2A waterline replacements, because the 2A road project, after we replace the water lines, otherwise, we're just kind of throwing money away.
Yeah.
At the end of the 2A project, which is 10 years.
Yes.
Do we expect water rates then to come back down?
Not necessarily, because, as you well know, the 2A ballot measure just gave us authority to dedicate 1 cent, or 1% for 10 years. It's going to probably address 20 center lane miles of road. We had 67 center lane miles of road that were either in poor or failed condition, so we purposely want to do a good job on the 2A project, so that we can go back to the public and get that sunset provision extended or taken off, so that we can then take care of the other 2/3 of the road that need to be reconstructed in this city, and the water lines that are underneath those roads. So we're just chipping away at about a third of the problem.
So if the water lines, the 2A is going to take 30 years then, really, to address
Yes.
the 66 center lane miles.
Yeah.
So the lifetime of a water line is?
Well, in our case here, it's beyond a reasonable level. We have water lines that have been in the ground between 60 and up to almost 100 years. Typical water lines probably should replace every 50-plus years, so we far exceeded the useful life of most lines, and that's why we, on a daily basis, have line ruptures, especially with the cast iron piping that was never designed to last as long as it did, and we've got some stuff out there that's approaching 90 to 100 years.
Thank you.
Ms. Cochran?
So, one of the concerns I have is on the Centennial Park master plan.
Yes.
Over half a million dollars is being spent on that park, and we, I've heard concerns that removing the road through the middle of that park will create accessibility issues. I've been told by some soccer people that adding a soccer field there would really not do a whole lot to help the community. I'm curious if that money could be put towards a rec center that the city so desperately needs.
Well, there's, first, the committee that developed the master plan that was adopted by the council is going to meet in the very near future to review that Phase 3. They, I think, are going to reconsider that particular phase as far as removal of the road. At the minimum, there's a need for more parking, given the demand that all those improvements have generated, so I think they'll be looking strongly at that, where can we add parking? Eliminating of the road will reduce parking, so there could be a strong possibility that we want to retain the road but make it one-way, but still resurface it. It's very, in very poor condition right now. I think we would agree with you on the proposed soccer field, that again, with what's happening out at Mountain View, and what potentially could happen in other locations, probably money better spent elsewhere.
And my other concern is too, you know, I've heard so many complaints about the homeless in that park.
Yep.
And I would just hate to continue throwing money at a place that people are not comfortable using until the homeless situation has been better addressed. So those would be my two concerns with
Okay.
the budget as it stands.
Sure.
Mr. Meiser?
I would at least suggest that council consider a cost of living increase for that water rate. I mean, we made a step increase last year.
Sure.
I think it's only fair and prudent and reasonable to adjust that, just relative to inflation, to keep up with what we did last year, otherwise, we're going to step backwards.
We could calculate that. That'd be roughly about 3% or, from a revenue standpoint, about $200,000 in that neighborhood, but we can bring that back to you for your next hearing on the budget, but we think that's a prudent step.
Right.
It's probably for Harry, but on page 26, correct me if I'm wrong, you show the total general fund revenue at roughly 13.8 million, but the graph on page 19 shows 12.1. My mis, are those not supposed to be the same figure?
So you're talking about the full budget?
Total revenue graph?
Well, page 19 references general fund revenues, 12.1 million. Page 26 is a total of general fund revenues, detail at 13.8.
Okay.
I would assume the graph is wrong, or I'm not looking at it right.
12.1 million dollars is the correct number, 12,155,560 is the correct number for revenues.
Which number?
12,155,560, which is on, I don't have page number with me, but
Page 19 is correct.
it's the very first page on the general fund.
What's the figure on page 26?
26.
The, I think
That's 2017.
No, on the 2019 total on page 26, the issue is, is total, we have total revenues and then adjustments to revenues
Okay.
underneath there, and so that's why it's 12 and not 13.
Unfortunately, I don't have a page.
Harry, if you wanted, you can borrow mine, I've got
I will be back with you on that.
I think John's explained it.
Yeah.
Harry, John's explained it.
You can borrow mine anyway, just in case.
You have to take the adjustments out from the lower section there.
He's adding them, yeah.
Yeah, it's the adjustments.
It just seems like they'd match. I realize there are adjustments.
You said page 26?
Page 26. The total revenue is up in the middle of the page, Harry.
Yeah.
It's 12.1, it just seems like
But the bottom line is 13.
The bottom line's 13, which is what I would think should be on the graph, but I'm not an accountant.
Yeah, that reflects transfer stuff typically.
I think what you're looking at, total revenues, that is on the chart. If you look at the, prior to the other financial resources, that's the number represented the chart. The other one is the operating transfers.
Yeah.
On page 26.
Yeah.
Total revenue is 12,155,560, that's the number represented on the chart.
They tie together.
The remaining is other financial sources, which is actually an operating transfer.
Wow.
Okay.
Not quite, but Any other questions?
Mr. Hammer?
Yes, the, so, in looking at, you can keep that, I'll just get it from you at the end of the, so looking at page 2 of our proposed budget memo, something that I don't understand, and maybe you can help me understand here, but something that probably would have helped me understand better would be to show that the operating and capital reserves by year, the, I'm not sure that there's a line item for those somewhere. We do have them listed in the discussion, but not in, but not in our chart of accounts, so to speak. And the thing that I don't understand is, we say we have, under the city budget, we say year-end, 2019 total operating reserves are projected to be 8.3 million, or 37.2% of total operating expenditures. Total operating expenditures is not the entire budget expenditures, that's just the operating expenditures, and what we have here are total expenditures on this page. And so if you do the math, that comes out to the operating expenditures being 22 million about, plus some change.
That's correct, but that's how you do calculate government reserves, is a function of your balance divided by your expenditures, so we're using the proper formula.
And where are those numbers on, in this presentation? So you've, what I'm, the point I'm making is, we have a narrative discussing them, but there are, but there's no chart of accounts showing reserves, total reserves, operating reserves, or the expenditure, the operating expenditures.
They're reflected, we could bring it up here and summarize, but they're reflected in the individual balance sheets of each of the funds.
We can modify the memo, you know, we can provide you a detail.
They, for sure, I would like to see, if we could, the, our operating reserves as a function of the years, so that we have an idea of how we're, how we're doing overall.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's an important number to me. And that's all I have for now.
Good. Anybody else? Ms. Turner?
I think in the past that we've helped fund the Fremont Center for the Arts out of the general fund.
Yes.
But I couldn't find a line item for them in the budget.
Probably go down to non-departmental.
It's in the non-departmental.
Yeah.
Okay, I must have
It's 20, 22,000?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I must have just missed that.
That's kind of a catch-all fund for, things aren't directly related to our service provision, but like, in this case, a contract with a not-for-profit.
Okay.
Tony's Slush Fund.
I wish.
Anyone else? Anyone on the right? Anyone on the left?
Well, we'll follow back up with, we think it is a prudent idea to come back with a proposed 3% water rate, that's about $200,000, and we'll provide you with a summary of the reserves on one page, so we'll basically take the individual fund balance sheets and just show the reserves on one page, so you can track them.
I mean, if that's council's pleasure, if that's my preference, but
Okay.
It'd be easier to follow.
I think
Easier to follow. So we're still in public meeting. Ben Stafford, Mr. Hammer?
Yes, I have a couple more comments.
Yeah.
Number one, that, another thing, if I could ask for it, is to have a, you know, the, I'm used to seeing budgets and manning, and we don't really have a manning
You mean staffing?
Staffing, manning, whatever, whatever term is, you know, and I think that we should have that, how many FTEs?
Oh.
Either we have by department or total, and how that changes by year, I think that would be important.
Yeah, we put, typically, we put that chart in, just as you adopt the budget, we'll provide you a copy of that.
Okay, yeah, great. And one other thing I think that we should do in this budget is, you know, the Fremont Economic Development Council is a group here and, that operates within the county and the city. I've myself been a member of the FEDC since I came to the city in 2005. I know of the, of the good work that they do, the city in the past has been a dues-paying member of that organization, and we're not really doing that now, and I would suggest that we consider matching the amount that the county pays. I do have, I do have an email from FEDC that is pretty lengthy, I don't want to take the time to cover it all, but, but what I'll do, Cindy, is I'll send that email to you, so you can distribute it to the council for consideration, but I would, I would recommend that we, that we at least pay membership dues in FEDC as part of this budget.
That's 8,500.
8,500 is what the county pays, yes.
As an alternative, I know we've had discussions of the FEDC, because Ryan wrote the grant, received the $30,000 Tech Start Grant, it requires, which is unusual, a one-to-one match, and one of the things we might propose is maybe matching at least half of that to allow FEDC to then raise the other half, because that would go a lot further as far as true economic impact and generating jobs than just a general contribution, is give them $15,000 designated to match that grant.
And, and I would still recommend we pay dues.
Okay.
Mr. Meiser? Time's up.
Well, as part of that whole process, and FEDC has maybe done this, but I would like to see some kind of a, maybe a five-year recap in terms of, of the things that FEDC has, has brought into the community, and more specifically, the things that they have brought in to the city that's helped our sales tax revenue.
I think this email will help answer those questions.
Okay.
We'll get that. We'll get that.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Just one quick question. There were some projects that didn't get completed this year, such as the wayfinding signage and our two-way streets. Do those roll over into twenty nineteen? And what are they categorized as? Because I didn't see them here.
Yeah, when—when we finalize the budget in December, we will bring to you with the—with the corrections.
Okay.
With the carryforward balance, because at that time, we will know what—know what needs to be carried forward.
Our signs won't be done by the end of the year.
No, so that's four hundred thousand dollars. We'll have you carry forward to next year to complete that.
All right. Thank you.
We've got a couple of projects like that.
Oh, that's—okay.
Okay. Are we at a point where we want to make a motion? Now, as I understand, we are preliminarily approving this budget with this motion. Is that what we're doing? Anyone understand that? And then your individual requests that you had, we take the administrator, and he will answer those, or to Mr. Patel. Clear? Good. Let's go ahead, and I'll ask for a motion in a second that we accept the proposed budget for two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Gonzalez.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the proposed two thousand and nineteen budget.
Second. Ms. Ocasio-Cass, thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
With the revisions that we talked about.
With the revisions that we spoke about, yes.
So noted.
Yes.
Would you call her, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocasio-Cass?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you all. At this time, we were going to have a discussion or a consideration for the Municipal Code, step was eleven. It is a—an ordinance for sex offenders, and council has determined that at this time, before we see how that all looks, we'd like to have a discussion. And the discussion that we had was that we would have the public, who has asked to speak. We would have our chief of police, if he would care to discuss it, and anybody from council. So why don't we open up with our chief of police, and you could ask him, now that I'm scared of the death, now, and any of council, go right ahead. Who would like to start?
Are we hearing from him, or are we asking questions first?
Do you have a presentation?
So I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I think the real issue before us tonight is not necessarily, are we preventing recidivism? That question has been examined by academics across the nation. There's been bodies of research, not only about effective methods of rehabilitation, but also prevention. We're not going to answer that with this ordinance. The question really is, are we looking at recidivism or a sense of safety by our community? This initial complaint came about because there was a sex offender who actually, by the way, is a multi-offender, has had more than one offense, who lives immediately adjacent to a school. That individual's behavior was concerning. It was not immediately known that he was a—a sex offender, but some of the kids that were on the playground came in and started reporting to their teachers that this individual was watching them and giving them the creeps. While we can't justify that or look at that from a research base, that behavior in and of itself is something that warrants further investigation. And so in October of last year, when this came to my attention, that's exactly what we did, and looked at our different partners for help and guidance on how sex offenders are managed here in Colorado, and how to address this particular sense of safety consideration by some members of our community. And so what we found was, is that there were eighty-nine offenders living within the incorporated limits of Canyon City. Forty-two of those offenders live within a buffer zone of a thousand feet around either a school, daycare center, public gathering area with, like, a—a park with a playground, and the library itself. And so we asked the question about, you know, what does this really mean? That roughly half of our sex offenders are living within these buffer zones, when clearly you can see on the map, there are a number of different places that would not be anywhere near those areas. The information that we started finding out was that there was not just one individual that was living immediately adjacent to a school, but there were five. Of the forty-two offenders that live within the buffer zone, ten of those had multi-offenses, meaning they have offended on separate occasions more than once. Twelve of the total eighty-nine, and I'm still compiling information, because there were ten of the offenders that live within these zones, that there was nothing in the public database for, and I would have to run them through NCIC or CCIC, not having a criminal connection, I can't do that. So it's—there's going to be some other research that needs to be done. But that's startling, to have, of the number we know, living in this area, one in four living within this buffer zone has more than one offense. So the whole premise behind residential restrictions not being effective is it—it lacks prevention of recidivism. If we figure out how to prevent recidivism, we'll be replicated nationally, because that is a question, again, not only the academic community, but law enforcement as a whole, has been trying to wrap their heads around to say, how can we prevent this? The reason why this is still a matter of local concern, and I would turn to our attorney to give you more guidance on why we're able to pass this, but is, again, to answer considerations for our community as to why this is a safety concern, and why it's important to our community. It was important enough for them to bring it up to me, and I—I would ask you, who would send their child to a university or college where the rate of sex offense or date rape is high? Who would move to a community where their child has to walk past a known sex offender's residence to get to their elementary school? These are all questions that not necessarily are codified in research, but they are important issues for our community. And so I would ask the council, as you're considering this ordinance, to not only think about, what are we trying to do with this? If we're trying to develop a body of research to say, we figured out recidivism, I think we're on the wrong track. If we're answering community concerns about sense of safety and feeling of security, then that's exactly where we need to be. I have some other statistics that show our per capita rate of sex offenders, as well as sex offenses. Unfortunately, I didn't have it before the packets went out, but I—I can answer questions about that. But unilaterally, the presentation that was done at the Colorado Municipal League concerning residential restrictions, of those six communities, we are between two times and six times higher on the per capita rate of sex offenders, and in the same range of the number of sexual offenses that occur. So communities who have successfully implemented residential restrictions for their community's sense of safety and security have much less of a concern for sex offenders and sex offenses than we do. So that's essentially something that wasn't contained in your—you're packets, and I'm still trying to answer some of the questions that came via email prior to this hearing.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of council? Ms. Gonzalez?
So, um, when children are walking to the school, there—there's two schools within the area, right?
I'm—I'm sorry.
Within the area that this is happening, there are two schools?
Oh, okay, so the original complaint, yes, there are two schools immediately near this individual's home.
The original, yes, okay. Now, this ordinance, I know we need to get deeper into it, but, um, so, like, the Boys and Girls Club, is that protected under—under this?
So under the definition of a—a childcare center, the Boys and Girls Club and the Bridge both qualify.
Okay, good, all right. Okay.
Ms. Cochran?
So, to kind of elaborate on her question, it also would include anybody that does at-home daycare services?
If they are licensed, yes.
Okay. And then beyond the original complaint that you told us about, have you had more issues within the city with this problem, or is it more of like a kind of preventative housekeeping type thing?
So I don't have numbers for you specifically with how many complaints that we've had. This was the most disturbing, quite honestly, because there was nothing under the Sex Offender Management Board guidelines to address this. And in this individual, here's one of the things that you've got to consider with this, is that if a person self-selects to live near a school, and you're a sex offender, that should be a cause for concern. If—if there's no other alternative, and that is the area that they can either afford from a monetary standpoint, or there's other circumstances around that, but you can't ignore that either, that a person self-selects to live near a school, especially one that has multiple offenses. Now, is he the—the—the example or the most common theme of what we're having? No, is the answer to your question. But we do have a number of offenses that, if a person is in their backyard, that may or may not raise suspicion. It did in this particular instance, because the kids reported that, hey, something's going on. This guy is—he's looking at us, and it's—it's given us an uneasy feeling. But other schools haven't reported those to me as of yet.
Ms. Ocasio-Cass?
Yeah, I would just like to have the public be aware of, one of the reasons why we decided, and we—especially for me, to continue this, and that is, because this is a subject that concerns a lot of people. It concerns the citizens of Canyon City. It concerns the children in our community. And also, what we want to do is make sure that, when we decide where we're going to go with this ordinance, we've got some questions ourselves of what we think. We want to make sure that, when it actually comes to the final initiative of this—the ordinance, we've had the opportunity, get with our attorney, and clear up all, I guess, the points that we can't clear up, you know, because a lot of this will end up looking at what Colorado statute states with regards to that, and everything else with there. We want to protect everybody's rights, okay? Everybody's rights, you know? And, you know, just like, you know, we got a—a letter from the school district and that, saying that, you know, they realize that these people have paid their dues with regards to society and everything else. So we want to protect each and every aspect of it that we can. And the reason for that is, when we do decide, when we vote on this ordinance at its final inconception, is that is, we've done the best job we can to protect everybody that would be involved, and mainly, the citizens of Canyon City, who we're here to represent. You know, we don't want to just put something out there that says, this is that, this is that. So we have to look at it in its totality. And that's what I hope, by allowing this discussion, and I hope that there's people out here, if they want to say something, when the time comes, please, get up and—and—and talk your piece, because that's how we learn. We learn from your concerns with regards to that. We have our concerns, but we also listen to your concerns. I mean, I appreciate everything that the chief has done with regards to this, with that, and I know he didn't have some of the stuff that he—he thought we should have. Well, now, he has the opportunity to get it to us for the next go-round, so we can have as much information as we can before us, before we go and look at, you know, the final decision with regards to this ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Turner?
Chief, you said there are ninety-four registered sex offenders in town, is that right?
No, ma'am, eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, okay, sorry, I heard you wrong. So the draft ordinance has prohibitions for, I think, was probably a more narrow category than that, or do all of those folks fit into, I guess, the—under the prohibition section, would they all fit into the categories that are listed there?
Not all of them will. So those who are required to register because of a felony conviction, have multiple offenses, or considered sexually violent predators, those folks will. So in other words, if there was a misdemeanor offender—a defendant that was required to register, that—that person would be exempt. So in other words, urinating in public would not be something that would be subject to this requirement.
So would you be able to give us updated numbers, then, on the—how many of those would fit into this definition that's in the proposed ordinance?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, I will.
You said something I wanted to hear more from you on, which was that, if we're looking at recidivism, we're going in the wrong direction. Can you explain what you meant by that?
I definitely can. So, you know, some of the studies that are out, and the Colorado Department of Corrections has some published research in two thousand and four concerning recidivism of offenders. And so that helped guide, as I'm sure many of the council knows, helped guide the Sex Offender Management Board guidelines on how to reduce recidivism. But there are other studies that are important as well. Victimization studies of crime, community safety studies concerning sense of safety and security. And so one of those studies, by Coe Martin and several other researchers, eighty-eight percent of the public that was surveyed in that particular survey said that they would support—it would make them feel more safe that schools and daycares, that there was some sort of residential prohibition of sex offenders living within those areas. Eighty-three in that same study said that, other areas where children regularly congregate, it would make them feel more safe. And so I think, really, to have a—a clearer, holistic picture of what does this ordinance do, we're not going to figure out recidivism. We're not going to figure out—it—it predominantly depended upon which research you look at. Social demographics of the offender play a part. The community demographics play a part. The individual behavior, the static nine. There's several other tests that show how to figure out recidivism. That's not what we're doing here. What we're doing here is we're answering the public's comments or concerns that there's something that's making us not feel safe. And it's based on an ordinance that was challenged by the Colorado Supreme Court, and that—so there were some portions there that gave us guidance on how to draft this ordinance. And so that's—that's kind of what I would say with this, is, what is it that we're trying to do with this? And I can tell you pretty clearly, from what my standpoint is, is I'm answering the community's concern about safety.
Okay, so it sounds like you have gotten some guidance from the city attorney on that? Is there—
Yes, quite a bit, I would say, correct.
Okay. I would appreciate if you could share that with council. I think we'd like to see that as well.
Yeah, we'd have to draft you something. I don't think we ever drafted any formal thing for Derek, but he and Corey had several conversations.
Okay. I mean, I—I guess—I'm not sure that your parsing is—isn't it about recidivism, though? Aren't we worried about, is these sex offenders recommitting?
So are we worried about that? Of course we are. Are we also worried about the community's concern that there are sex offenders living immediately adjacent to the playground of a elementary school? Yeah, I think that's a concern as well. You know, it doesn't necessarily answer—a singular survey doesn't provide context for effective legislation. The implementation of legislation has an impact. The follow-up of legislation has an impact. Are we simply saying that we're going to pass something that is going to prevent people from committing future sex offenses? Maybe. The Colorado Bureau of Investigation on their website concerning sex offenses, and I quote, "The way sex offenders select victims is often more influenced by opportunity and access than by preference and victim type." And so, kind of reading through some of these pieces there, there's not a silver bullet. It is about a sex offender management protocol, and there are several different aspects to that, not only community safety, community awareness. So registries have been shown in the academic community to not be effective at reducing recidivism. I would say on the just general awareness side, that's not—not true, and that also affects where people decide to buy homes. So that—there's not a single body of empirical research that says, hey, here's the one thing that's going to fix this, whether it's residential restrictions, or chemical castration, or rehabilitation programs. There's not a singular document that's going to say that. And so that's why I really wanted us to focus more on, we're not going to solve the problem of recidivism with this, but we can address our community's concern about safety.
Are there any empirical studies that you know of that have shown that these type of restrictions are effective for addressing recidivism?
So there are—maybe—
Because I've looked, and I couldn't find one, and it seems to be the consensus is that they haven't been shown to be effective to address recidivism.
So the problem with it is, is in those studies, the research methodology didn't look at the sampling type of sex offenders that they were reviewing. It also didn't consider was—the—it basically said that there's neutral on impact. It doesn't lower or raise recidivism by implementing these residential restrictions. So it's not that these are completely ineffective, it's that it's neutral. There's no way, really, to tell one way or the other, because victimization studies will tell you that sex offenders who have gone in other places and committed sex crimes, they might travel to find their victims. But when you have the Colorado Bureau of Investigation saying publicly that the way they select victims is often more influenced by opportunity and access, that would indicate to you that there's more to this question than simply a residential restriction is ineffective.
This is a point of information, something parallel to this concept, is your adoption of a thousand-foot prohibition of the sale or cultivation of marijuana within a thousand feet of a school, daycare facility, or park. Does that prevent kids from not getting marijuana? No. But it's something that is very common in the sale of marijuana, is to at least keep it further away from these child-centric entities like schools, daycare centers, and parks. So, again, is there research to demonstrate that that's reduced the utilization of marijuana by kids? There is no research that definitively states that, but clearly, most communities have passed those ordinance, because, as the chief has related to, it enhances their sense of personal safety and security. That's— of personal safety and security. That's something you can't necessarily measure in a study that is a very individualistic evaluation and assessment. And we try to track it through our citizen survey, and, you know, it's not directly tied to the facts. For example, this past year, we saw a reduction, though it's still high, we saw a reduction in the public's overall sense of safety and security, despite the fact we saw significant reductions in the property crime rate and the violent crime rate in the city. So they're not correlated. But you cannot ignore people's feelings. They have to be validated. And these are some of the steps that we use to validate people's sense of security. And they want enhanced security. It's hard to prove whether this is a positive or negative on recidivism, but if it improves people's sense of security, that's a strong positive, because that's why people move to communities. Security and safety are the number-one issues that factor into why they live in a location.
Right.
I wasn't actually finished. Thank you. So this individual you're talking, where you're talking about that lives near two of these schools, is he still under supervision, then, by, is he under, on probation, or-
He's on parole.
A parole, okay. So is it, would it be a solution to work with parole, then, to give him limitations individually to say he can't live within one of these buffer zones?
Absolutely. And I tried that, and unfortunately, it was not well-received. And essentially, the response was, is that we have checked all the marks on the checklist for the SOMB. And if you have any concerns, or if there are other people who have concerns, send them to us.
Okay, that's unfortunate.
Yes, it is.
Seems like that would be a real, much easier solution, and more direct and quicker solution to at least that issue. But I appreciate that you reached out and tried to accomplish that.
Well, that's part of the reason why this occurred in October of last year, and this is just now coming before you. You know, I clearly don't want to create systems if there's already an effective one in place. But I did not meet with success trying to work through the existing systems.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Meisner?
It's hard for me to believe that you and I are on different sides of the coin. But the first thing is that we need to understand, you're suggesting or telling us that this has been, this proposed ordinance is a result of some complaints. You and the public need to understand if this ordinance is passed, that would have no impact on those current two residents. That situation would go unchanged. It would only impact anybody in the future. So this is not a solution to your current problem. Second of all, when you look at the ordinance and the whereas, I would personally appreciate that you make some corrections in the first two paragraphs, or at least give us some documentation to justify your numbers. Your first, your first whereas notes that there are numerous occurrences. Numerous, to me, suggests a reasonably high number. I would like to know what that number is. Your recidivism rate for released sexual predators is high. Again, I would like to know what high means. And, and those numbers relative to Canyon City, because those whereas suggest that those things are, are specific to Canyon City. So I'd like to see some specific numbers, at least on those two particular items. Keep in mind, you made reference to walking within a hundred, within a thousand feet to school. I think you're going to find that a, a good portion of RE1 students walk more than a thousand feet. So those same students would still be subjected to walking past a sex offender's house.
Ms. Hammer?
Thank you. Chief, thanks for coming tonight. Just a couple of questions, I guess. The, in the memo that, that you wrote to us, you said 36 known sexual offenders and 89 out of 89 in the city. With, so there are 36 within the blue circle areas. So do I have that correct?
There's actually 42, but 36 are in private residences.
Private residences.
Yeah, there are six that are within foster care placed by the Department of Corrections.
Okay. And, and I note that at the, at the lower left-hand corner, it's close to the prison on that, on that figure, there's, there's two blue circles there. One of them is the, what are those two blue circles?
So one is the Boys and Girls Club, and the other is the Bridge.
And the other's the Bridge. Okay. And, and I would note that that's, that seems to be kind of the lower-income area, perhaps lower rental values in, in the city. And it looks like we have quite a few registered sex offenders in, in those areas. The, one of the things that, that, I did go online and read some information about this. And one of the things that I noted is that they, they say that one of the, if you look at it, they say one of the best things you can do for, for a sex offender is make sure that they have a stable living arrangement. And would this, would this current ordinance, or does this current ordinance take, take note of group living arrangements where several offenders are living together under treatment conditions with supervision? And would, would this ordinance prohibit those situations? I guess that'd be a question for you, Catherine.
Actually, I can't answer that. So under the exceptions, it specifically lists that, you know, a, an offender who is placed by the Department of Corrections in foster care, specifically to address the issues that you're talking about, that those would be, those persons would be exempted from enforcement of the ordinance.
Thank you. I did, I did note foster care. I thought that meant juvenile sex offenders is what, but that's, that's, that's group, that's referring to group living arrangements, is that correct?
It could also be diminished mental capacity or developmental disabilities. So there are a number of things in the application of foster care that would come into view there. However, if a person wanted to do rehabilitative group home living within that area, for people of mental capacity who don't have some of the concerns that would normally place them in foster care, it, it would still apply to that circumstance. So if the Department of Corrections decided to open up a rehabilitative center within one of these zones, under the current language of the ordinance, I don't believe that that would be allowed.
So it would not be allowed?
Correct.
Okay.
Because of a zoning issue, though, right?
No, because of the ordinance.
No, because of this ordinance, the way that this-
Yeah, so I'm going to go to the public.
Oh, yeah, let's go from the public.
Yes, Ms. Cochran?
Have you talked with the Sheriff's Department at all as far as how this would affect them and their ability to manage offenders being pushed out into their district?
No, ma'am, I have not. I have talked with the sheriff about this issue coming before council, but not specifically its impact on, on them.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Harvey. We'd like to go to people who have asked to speak to council, Paula Boozer. Would you like to come forward and?
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
We reserve the right to redirect.
Thank you. I'm Paula Boozer, Director of Support Services for Canyon City Schools. And one of my roles is to assure the safety and security of all those students in, in our district. And I appreciate what Mr. Awark said about, safety and security is, is number one in the community, and it's number one in schools. And, and one thing that we ask our students to do is if they see it, feel it, or hear it, to report it. Once they report it, we feel that it's our responsibility to do something about it. And so I'm here tonight to read a statement in, on behalf of our Canyon City School Board of Directors, in support for the ordinance that Mr., that, I'm sorry, Chief Harvey has been promoting recently. So I'm going to read that statement now, if you don't mind. And I believe you all have a copy of it, but I wanted to make sure I got a chance to share that publicly.
Please do.
To the Canyon City City Council, please accept this letter as a formal request to consider an ordinance prohibiting known sex offenders from residing adjacent to the property of a school campus in the Canyon City limits. We are quite aware, one of our campuses currently experiences a circumstance where a known sex offender convicted of crimes against children can simply look out their back window, or even be in their backyard, observing the actions of our children while they are playing, outplaying during recess. We, as a Board of Education, have no wish to make life more difficult for persons who have paid their debt to society. However, we think it prudent, for the safety of our children, for the sake of their parents, and even for the legal well-being of such persons on the registry, not to reside in such close proximity to properties containing school-aged children as a matter of routine. We thank you for, we thank you for your consideration on this matter. Sincerely, the Canyon City School Board District Education, Board of Education, Larry Otto, Lloyd Hardwood, Mary Kay Evans, Shad Johnson, and Robin Reiser. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Jody Enderly?
Thank you so much for hearing us. We appreciate your time. I'm Jody Enderly, and I'm the Health Services Coordinator at Mountain View Core Knowledge School. And some years ago, before Chief Harvey had even arrived on the scene, I had spoken with Deputy Sanger from the Fremont County Sheriff's Department, and he attempted to get written into the gentleman who lives on Juniper's parole instructions, that he could not be in his backyard during school hours. So we have a diagram here. And this is like the drive of our school. One right here is our kindergarten room. It was just our third grade room, but that was kindergarten. This is the little amphitheater where we have some classes. This gentleman's shed is right here. Okay, so after this was written in the parole violation, we didn't see him in the yard as much, but a screen went up on his shed window, so we couldn't see. And I apologize, I don't have a slide made of this, but I do have a picture. It's kind of a disturbing screen of like, an upside-down head. So I brought a picture. You guys can pass it around. So we've been battling this for a long time, and I respect the fact that this gentleman has paid his due to society. But last year, a little boy came up, told one of our teachers, said, "That man keeps watching me." And to have to deal with this as a school safety person is really disturbing. And I understand he lives there. But we have a duty to protect our kids if there's someone that cannot resist children. We also have a duty to protect the predator from their own temptation. So I would just ask if you would please consider this ordinance, because we need to give people the feeling of security and safety. And this person also, as was mentioned, has over, was convicted of over having 20 items of sexual exploitation of children, video items. We don't know if he's in that shed photographing our kids or not, but they're telling us that he's watching them when they can see him. So thank you for your time, and we'd appreciate anything you can do on this. Do you have any questions for me about this situation?
Ms. Turner?
I guess, you know, Councilmember Meisner mentioned earlier that the ordinance won't require him to move. So how do you-
I understand that.
How do you feel about that fact that it probably isn't going to solve your immediate problem?
It's not going to solve my immediate problem, but maybe it'll prevent someone else from going through this. You know, and if we can prevent the sexual abuse of one child, this would be worth it. And, you know, maybe we're going to have to plant trees or something. I don't know. We've tried a lot of different things, and we have some great staff members. And when he was in his backyard, and he'd be out looking at our kids, our staff members would just go stare him down, because what else could we do? You know, and we've tried, when he'd be out there, we would have staff try and take pictures so we could forward that to the police. But since it was, I think, put in his parole that he couldn't be out there, I think now he's just in the shed, because shortly after that is when that picture, and it was blocked in on the window. So appreciate if you could pass this and keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Ms. Meisner, did you have a question?
Caitlin took care of my issue.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
That was my question as well.
All right, thank you. Karen Satari?
Again, thank you all for having us here tonight. I am the principal of Mountain View Core Knowledge School for the last 12 years, 18 years in education. And as Paula said, our biggest priority is keeping kids safe. But you may or may not know that the duties of teachers and school staff continue to grow and grow and grow, and the job description from the state of Colorado is this big. So on top of, of course, meeting academic goals that are more rigorous than ever, we have more social-emotional issues. We have, we deal with everything from feeding kids to protecting them. And to take away one thing, I mean, obviously, we don't know about the people who are not convicted, that could be creeps, right, living in neighborhoods. But if a person is convicted of a child sex crime and more than once, should they have full opportunity, full viewing opportunity of our playground and all of our kids, to the fact that they're making people uncomfortable? I don't think teachers should have to be forming a human shield for kids to walk by during the day in their everyday interactions. We should not have to continue to invest in trees to plant in front of these places when we know this is going on. This should be something, for a lot of kids, school is their safety place. Home is not. That's the place they go where they know they're going to have consistency, it's going to be stable, it's going to be safe. And it's pretty scary when they realize that we are protecting them, you know. And it may not be a big deal to someone who may not have little kids, or, or they don't see the relation there. But at the end of the day, when you have someone who is going to the extent of, when we file a complaint, they hang an upside-down creepy picture in the window, right, as a, as a response to our complaint, that's who we're dealing with. And this would certainly help keep our kids feeling safe. It would help our staff do their jobs more effectively. And, and I think it would increase the quality of our city if people coming in knew that it was a priority. I do agree that everyone has rights, but I believe children's rights should be protected above criminals' rights. So that's what I have.
Any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Thank you for coming, and I appreciate your concerns. And, and we're certainly, you know, as a council, I know we're, we're very interested in hearing what, what, how things look to you as, as a professional educator. I have a, kind of a practical question for you. So in that figure right there, and we have the street Juniper, and of course, that's on the south side of, of the Core Knowledge School. Are you concerned about residents on the south side of Juniper watching the kids?
I am. I'm concerned about anyone in that close proximity that, you know, my husband worked for Star Point years and years and years ago, and with their, their sex offenders that they care for, they have very strict guidelines. They can't take them to parks, they can't take them around children, even in stores. There's very specific guidelines on how to help rehabilitate those folks. And one of them is not giving them the opportunity to just be front and center in front of a, a children's place. I wouldn't take an alcoholic and say, "Sit and work in this liquor store and try to get better." You know what I'm saying? I'm very concerned about the folks within that distance, but specifically the ones that have easy viewing access. They don't have to come out of their shed or their household to take pictures. They can just have it all set up inside of their house. So that's my highest priority.
I understand that. And, and that's kind of where I'm, I'm going with the question, because the, if, you know, I don't know what the next adjacent street is to the south there from Juniper, but would you be concerned about people on that street? In other words, what, what I've heard you say is that, is that the ease of viewing figures into the concern, or level of concern. I mean, we, we have some level of concern about, about sex offenders in general. But, but the level of concern goes up, it sounds to me, like you're saying, with the easier it is for them to be able to observe and perhaps interact with the kids. And so the, you know, part of what, what I'm struggling with is the circle concept of saying we're going to exclude people in a certain circle. The, I know it'd be a lot more complicated, maybe perhaps, but something that would be easier, easier and forced would be to go by street, because what do you do if you have a house that is cut by the circle? Are you in or are you out, type things? And whereas, maybe if you have more defined boundaries. I'm just trying to get a sense from you of, of how, how big of a boundary, you know? If, if it's a mile, they, that probably won't pass constitutional muster here in, you know, in Colorado.
I think absolutely. We're always, obviously, in today's, the way it is today, we always have to be on high alert for people that are strange, kind of walking around campus that we don't recognize. But, and we are, we're always on safety patrol for these things. But when there's nothing you could do about someone standing right there, I mean, it's literally, the kids are from me to you, this is his backyard. Okay, so, you know, what does that do? It's almost a joke in that sense. So I would absolutely be more concerned about the closer, the more visible, you know, the more access. But I think if we're going to pass an ordinance, it should be thorough from the beginning so that we're not going back and adding to it later. I understand some people are going to be kind of grandfathered in because they own a house in that area, and we have to problem-solve that. But when someone's taking up residency, and they know, hey, here is, here's the restrictions, you may not live within these boundaries, then you look somewhere else. So. I have four children of my own, outside of raising the 300 at my school, and so it's of high priority to make this community the safest and, and most beneficial place it can be, so that they want to stay, right?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I did have a question for Karen.
Karen?
Sorry. Yeah. I worked at Mountain View about six years ago, maybe a little bit longer. And this, this was the same problem you were having- And this, this was the same problem you were having then.
Yep.
Has it increasingly gotten worse
Yeah.
over the last six or seven years?
It has. Last year is when, in the year before, we really started noticing some things. I don't, I don't think we realized, when we talked to Officer Harvey, it was really a moment of panic of, this guy is literally standing outside with his phone. Is he taking pictures of us? We don't know, you know? And it's, it's almost a mockery that we can't do anything about it, you know, in that way. So, we have been battling this a long time, but I think it's become just more prevalent.
I knew it was an issue when I worked there. Middle school kids would even complain about him standing. I think he was peering out his shed at the time, is what I remember.
Yeah.
But...
And these are kids who don't know there's a sex offender there. They, they say, "That, that guy's looking at me." And then we go and look it up, and sure enough, it's a sex offender. What do you do about it? Oh my gosh, law enforcement, there's a sex offender standing here. Oh, there's nothing you could do about it either? Holy cow, right?
Right.
I mean, that's, that's pretty alarming, you know, in a place to be responsible, to protect these kids and make them feel safe, and then also have them know that they have to walk a certain way at the school. They can't go a certain place. They have to be restricted in their environment because of someone else's rights.
Sure. So what I'm getting at is, we've got a known sex offender that's living close to your school that was discovered because he was acting in a certain way. How many other sex offenders are near other schools that are not registered
Right.
that, that might be doing the same without showing those kinds of behaviors?
Sure. I mean, usually when someone's been caught, they've offended a whole lot more prior to that, and then they finally get caught. And so, yeah, we can't do anything but beyond, you know, we're always going to be watching and trying to protect the kids against something that may stand out as odd or, or different. But there's, it's a whole different situation when you know what it is and you still can't do anything about it.
And this is scary to me, because I've worked with, with children. I've been alone with 30 kids. And when you're working with a group of small children who can easily be distracted by somebody who's a master at it, you know, 30 kids and one person, that's, that's a lot to handle. And so I, I agree that, you know, trying to keep these kids on the safe end of everything is, is very, very important to our community, so...
I certainly appreciate Chief Harvey and City Council for listening to this and, and considering it. We know there's a lot to consider when, when we really start talking about it, but I just ask you to remember that children can't protect themselves, okay? And sex offenders made a choice that got them in that position. And, you know, I do feel like they have rights, but are their rights more important than innocent children's rights and, you know, the safety of our schools? Be hard pressed to believe that, so...
Okay. Ms. Cochran?
I have a quick question for you. You say that this has been an issue ongoing for six plus or more years. And you keep reiterating that there's nothing you can do about it, but then I also heard somebody mention, you know, potentially planting trees or some sort of privacy fence, or how come nothing like that has been done if it's been an issue for six years?
It's actually city property that the ditch runs right alongside of, so I'd invite you guys to put some trees up there, to be honest. We have a, we are restricted on, I mean, honestly, I kind of joke about that, but that the ditch runs through right there. And so, there is, you know, we could do some things, and we've put up some landscaping, but it makes it pretty difficult. If you come over, I'd invite anybody to come over, I'd show you exactly what we're talking about. And I think if you saw it firsthand, you'd really understand, you know, just the dynamic of just how close this residence is. And that's a good question. I, I don't want to make it a huge deal, probably will be now, but with our parents, we don't want kids pulled from our school because of this. You know, that's always, also a concern. We have volunteers who, I mean, I guess we could have, you know, set up stations of them just standing in front of this house in, you know, shifts to make sure that kids feel safe. And that would be a pretty extreme, obviously, you know, it's, it's an extreme answer to this. But if it was your child and you were bringing him to school, dropping him off, knowing that, that someone with these kinds of offenses had perfect viewing all day, you know, what, what would your, you know, answer be to that, I guess?
Well, and it's like we've said, even if this does pass, it doesn't solve your problem. So that's why, that's kind of where I'm getting, is I think there needs to be thinking beyond just this ordinance if it's that big of an issue and has been this big of an issue for six years in that one particular spot. I think that there needs to be some looking at ways to just restrict his view, whether it's landscaping or fencing. Because if I had a child at that school, I wouldn't be waiting for an ordinance to pass. I would be putting something up to block his vision.
And then when someone moves in two doors down, what do we, we just keep responding and reacting and reacting and reacting?
Well, you know, you keep bringing up the specific instance, and so that's why I'm talking about the specific instance.
And, and I understand. And we are working on doing something for that specific situation. But I think at the end of the day, we're looking at a long-term, it's not a solution, but it's definitely, it's definitely going to be helpful to have that ordinance in place, because it sends a strong message to the offenders too, that you're not, you know, you're not going to be just welcomed in these child-friendly areas. We need children sa, you know, child-safe zones. Many communities have them, and I think that Canyon City deserves that.
Okay.
Okay.
We're getting a little long on this issue. We're going to return it and have your discussion individually, if you'd like, with our attorney, with our police chief, and then hopefully bring it back. Is that the consent?
Uh huh. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would, I'd recommend is, in, in terms of enforceability, the, at some point, if we draw circles, we're going to have to specify what houses are in or what houses are out. Someone's going to have to do that. The, the, and because if you have, if you have a house that's split by circles, that in or out, someone has to make that decision. And so, and so what I would recommend is rather than circles, because it has to be done at some point, is that, is that there be something more like a street map, these houses are in, these houses are out, or something, that, that...
I, I think what we would do is we would put that in the ordinance, how to determine those things, so it wouldn't be subjective case by case. So it'd be laid out in the ordinance. The only problem with what you're suggesting are the, the thing, I mean, schools are pretty sedentary, right? But daycares move around, and so we can't, we don't want to amend something and put street names in every time a daycare pops up. So it's a little practically problematic, I think.
Yeah, we have language...
9.11 addresses that, I think. It talks about a straight line measurement from the corner of one property...
We have the language in the marijuana restriction.
To the corner of the other property.
I forgot that part was in there.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you. We are going to go to number 12, which is second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance number 25, series 2018, entitled an ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, adding section 6.08.010 to the City, the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning vicious dogs. At this time, I guess we would, do we need a staff report? Does anybody have any questions of administrator?
I throw this to the city attorney.
Or the attorney? This is the second reading.
We have a revision.
Based upon your, your, your direction at the last meeting, so in paragraph K there on the first page, we took out the language that starts with "or attempts to bite" all the way through to "attempts to bite", and then it starts again with "a human being or other domestic animal or livestock", with the exception of "foul." So that took out "attempts to bite" and the repeatedly charging offense language that we discussed last time, or aggressively threatening.
I'll take your dog out. Okay. Sorry. Any other questions? None. I'll entertain a motion in a second then, this is the second reading. Ms. Meisner?
Mayor, Council. I move that we approve... Oh, I lost my place. What ordinance are we at? I heard this. I move that we approve ordinance 25, series 2018, on second reading.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Cochran, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran? Aye. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Number 14 is the Canyon City US Highway 50 Access Plan, IGA. We have a gentleman here, Mr. Lancaster, and would you introduce this gentleman here? I know I've seen him before.
Thank you, yes, we're welcoming back Andrew Menn from Stolfish and Associates.
Okay, thank you. So in open discussion, would you like to open that up, or field questions, or...
Yeah, so, you know, just, just to let everybody know where we're at. So, this access control plan is for the one and a half miles from 15th Street to the Abbey Access on US 50. The implementation of this access control plan is the next step for the US 50 Corridor Plan. Nothing moves forward on that until this is, this is in place. The next step would be devolution of Fremont Drive and then moving towards phasing in the construction of this project in the East Canyon District. So, this, I understand each one of you have one of these in front of you. This is the culmination of Andrew's work for the past, what, nine months or so? CDOT and the city were partners on this project. We've put a lot of work into it. We've done a number of open houses, took a lot of public comment. All that public comment is, is in the access control plan report. So the next step is intergovernmental agreement between the city and CDOT. And what it does is this, this is basically acts as an overlay of the access, the state access code that's specific to this section of the highway through the city. And basically, the IGA, just as an understanding between the two governments, that this is how we're going to administer access when and if the frontage road goes away. That's the bulk of what is in this plan, is what happens when the frontage road goes away. And we're, again, the whole, we had numerous goals in this project. One of the, other than the obvious safety and mobility, was the improvement of access to businesses. And we believe we've achieved that with this plan. So that is, the next step is approval of the IGA for the city to sign it, and then it would go to CDOT for their signature before it's in effect. So, brought Andrew here tonight to answer any questions on, there's nothing, there's nothing different in here than what you would have seen in the final draft that was presented to the public at the last open house. This is just the formalized report put together, along with all the appendices of all the data that was used for the project.
Any questions of Adam, or Ms. Turner?
Yeah, I have a, I'm sorry, your name's Ann?
Andrew.
Andrew. I'm looking at a memorandum that's in this packet from January 5th. And it talks about, I think this was kind of in the planning stages, where you're laying out what, what the study was going to look at. And there were four options that were laid out. And one of them was called the no ACP, which would be not the access control plan, but would have just looked at extending existing accesses that go to the frontage road now to go straight to Highway 50. But I didn't see anything else about that in all these many, many documents I read.
Yes, sir, let me explain that a little bit.
Okay.
As we were formulating our traffic models to do this project, that was, really served as a, a step to get from one place to another. But really, the whole goal of the project was to try to take the things about doing this that interest the city and incorporate those with CDOT's interests. You know, CDOT's mission is to provide safe and effective through travel on their state highways that they control. One of the most efficient ways to do that is by limiting access. The more access you put onto a highway, the more congestion it builds, you get more crashes, all of those types of things. So really, when we talked about that no ACP action, or option, that really wasn't something that CDOT would entertain doing. That, if, if, if that was on the table, there would have not really been a reason for us to spend nine months on the project. It would have been just, yeah, sure. It was my understanding that years ago, I think back in the 90s even, that's the way it used to kind of work, is all those streets would basically come right into the highway. So that was really an option we did to help us model our traffic more than anything and try to figure out how, how is this traffic going to change once you implement these access restrictions and take out Fremont Drive? And where does it go? And where does it turn? And what impacts does that have?
Okay. You mentioned safety, and I, there is discussion in here about, you looked at crash reports in the area, and could you talk a little bit about how the access control plan would, would address safety?
Sure. One of the big ones is, there was really a couple of hot points that we found. You know, we have access to CDOT's crash database. Along Fremont Drive, probably the biggest area of concern that we saw was right there in front of City Market. Lots of rear-end crashes. From what we can tell, we think a lot of them are due to, you know, people trying to turn left, and then the person behind them rear-ends them because they're not paying close enough attention or whatever. Most cases like that, the solution be, hey, let's put in a left turn lane on the road if this was an isolated case. That's not really an option here, because there's just no room for it. So that was one area that we noticed, higher than normal crash. And then, along the highway, and as well as the frontage road at Orchard, we start seeing more crashes at the intersections, which is typical. But because those, because the frontage road sits right next to the highway, it introduces some complexities to the way those signals operate that don't necessarily meet drivers' expectations all the time. And I, I know just as, you know, I stopped at Jimmy John's on my way in today, get dinner, and I was heading to turn left on, and get on the highway, going west. I mean, there's a line 15 cars deep going the other way, so I essentially had to make the left turn on the red. So, when you start getting some...
You can't make that.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't say anything. Look over my shoulder. But things like that, you know, you'll see drivers doing those types of things, and, you know, something bad could have happened to me doing something like that. But when you don't have those movements, that type of mobility you want because of how close those two roads are to one another, that can cause some safety issues.
I mean, so you, you do this for a living?
Yep.
And I've lived in some other places. I've never quite seen a traffic setup like what we have here in Canyon. Are you aware of other communities that have this kind of like diagonal turning, where you are crossing? I, I've just never seen anything else like it.
No, and I haven't, I haven't seen one this, I'll use the word severe. Usually, our goal is, especially at signalized intersections, I think in Pueblo, now there's a few places where you try to bow out the frontage road as much as you can to get more separation from the highway. And based off of where those properties are, and I'm sure a lot of them are historic buildings that were there well before, you know, this was really formalized. It just wasn't possible. There's no room to do it without buying up, you know, tons of properties. So, yeah, this is a fairly unusual situation. I know CDOT isn't, they're the ones that maintain and operate those traffic signals. They don't particularly like those traffic signals either, so...
And no one in town likes those traffic signals.
Yeah, and unfortunately, with the way that it's configured right now, it's just the way it has to be. There's no way around it.
I just have one last question. Some of the public comments I saw talked about lack of sidewalks and space for cyclists in the area. Can you address how the, the ACP would allow for that?
Sure. And I think it's, one of the things that I think we maybe haven't articulated as well to the public is helping them understand that really, we're only here doing this ACP because council adopted the US 50 Corridor Plan back in 2015. And that was the document that brought in land planners and those types of people to look and say, "How do we revitalize this corridor?" And so it was their recommendations that said, "Let's get rid of this frontage road and put in a multi-use path and free up that space that it could either be used to public benefit or it could, you know, has the potential to be given back for some private uses as well." Really, this access control plan is really a, a small step in the entire process, because it's just a process that was required by CDOT because they own the frontage road. And basically, they can't give it up until they have, and... And basically, they can't give it up until they have an IGA that's agreed upon. So the corridor plan is really talks a lot about how does this, the paths and all these other benefits, how does that help the community? And how does that fit the needs? Whereas we're just looking at, how do we get this done? How do, how do we accomplish that goal?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Miesner, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple. What's, what is your intended plan of action tonight for city council to approve this and move forward?
So you would authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement? That's the goal tonight.
Do you realize that we just got this on Wednesday?
Do I? Yeah, yes.
Anybody?
Yeah.
Okay. The plan itself, is it gonna, is it specifically stating how each of those proposed intersections are going to be laid out? Limitation wise?
Not to a design level, no. So most of this, yeah, most of this is, most of this is just data appendices for, for, it's backup for the study. So appendix F is really what we're looking at tonight. That's the IGA and exhibit two that IGA is in tabular form, what happens to each of the accesses, and then it has the map form that follows. And that map form was what was presented at the open house and, and has been on the wall, let's see here at City Hall since that day. And the tabular form is basically the narrative that describes what's on the map and what was discussed with each of the individual property owners. So that, that's the meat of it. That's, that's the part of this 300 and some pages that matters.
Were there not issues that were raised in the last meeting? So I was under the impression were going to be formulated into the final plan.
Correct, and those, and those were. So if you, if you have a specific one we can discuss?
Well, I was under the understanding that myself and another council person had requested, based upon our discussions with DOT, that, that the existing Fremont Drive in some sections would potentially be large vehicle RV parking in terms of that designation? And, and I'm not sure.
So that would not be anywhere in this document because that is a design consideration when it's time to build. This is access control. This has nothing to do with highway parking or, so when Andrew was referring to that area of Fremont Drive and what that becomes, that's a design consideration for council in the future after this step.
If we approve the IGA, then we're accepting the colors and things on the maps?
Yes.
So it's just for traffic flow?
But, but I understand that there was-
Right, so for example, so for example, there, for, for, I don't know the right term. So for purposes graphically on here, they show, they show a center median that's red. Okay, let's just be, you know, and they also show a pathway, multimodal pathway. That's to reflect what's in the US 50 corridor plan, but that's not what's being approved relative to access tonight. So those are some of the design elements that they, conceptual design elements that they've thrown in there just so that graphically you can see what the intent is in following the US 50 corridor plan. But those aren't things that are, that are being codified with us and CDOT. That's what the narrative, so the map is a graphic showing where those access points are at, but the narrative explaining exactly what happens at each access, that's what's happening tonight. Access control only.
Can I ask a question off of yours real quick?
Sure.
I'm sorry. If, if we move to that phase, is that a city paid expense?
Not necessarily. So there's, and there's a whole section in here that covers what the triggers are. We can go through those in detail if you'd like.
No, I'm just-
There's a whole, there's a whole section here that covers the triggers, what happens, you know, so who, when, when does it have to happen and then who pays for it? It could be the city that pays for it in full, it could be the city that partners with a private entity, could partner with CDOT. CDOT could pay for it in full, a private entity could pay for it in full. Those are all the big mysteries in the future of which phase gets done first, who pays for it, what triggers it. So, you know, an example would be the signalized intersection at the Abbey. That's probably the biggest change in this whole thing. Well, there's no sense for anybody to pay for that right now with no development at the Abbey. So at the time of development at the Abbey, that may be something that has to be addressed at that time that will, that'll trigger that warrant for that new signal. But it has to be in the plan now so that when people, developers in the city or CDOT's looking at making improvements along there, we're aware of what everybody's expectations are there at that time.
Okay. Mr. Miesner, thank you for letting me impede on your question.
Oh, you're not done?
No, he's not done.
Okay, Mr. Miesner, then move to Mr. Kess.
Well, I'm understanding that there's still some access points that are going to divert traffic potentially to a secondary street north of existing Fremont Drive that are going to create some potentially massive traffic issues that essentially we're saying is going to be okay if we approve the plan tonight. Is that correct?
No, so that again, and that's covered in a, and I can't remember the section, what it's called, but it's, it's covered under other design considerations. So again, these professionals that created this plan are giving the next people that pick up this plan a heads up that when and if you do this to this access, you are going to have to look at these things. And so there's a couple of off-system road connections that we think are necessary for this plan to work. So again, that's back to the triggers. This can't happen without that happening.
But, but we're approving the access. That's going to trigger a problem in five years.
Right, but it can't be built until these things are taken care of. So again, that's, that's taken care of at a design stage.
Thank you.
Mr. Kess?
Okay. My understanding with this IGA is basically it's the first step of many steps with regards to this total project from 16th Street all the way out to the Abbey. And as we take each step, that's when we will deal with problems and this and that, what can be done, what can't be done. So we're not saying by approving this IGA that we're approving it in its totality. We're saying we're approving it with regards to how we're looking at that Highway 50 corridor expansion. And then we'll deal with, in a sense, each phase as it, as it, you know, comes about. Because we're not going to say we're going to do everything that's in here. We're just saying we think that the plan has a lot of merit and we'll look at it as we continue with whatever phase we start with.
Correct.
Basically, is that what, that's what this does?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, should council adopt this or approve it, it can stop right there. If council never chooses again to take any more action, nothing changes along the corridor. It doesn't commit you to, to anything like that. It just says, if you do make the decision someday to say, we're ready, now we want to get rid of Fremont Drive, this document really tells you what does that look like when you make that decision?
And there is an amendment process for the agreement if, if in a design stage something gets flushed out. I don't, I don't have an example, but if something did, then we would amend the access control plan.
Ms. Cochran?
My concern is, and I read a lot of concerns in, because you guys attached the comment forms, about diversion of a lot of the traffic that's currently on Fremont Drive to the neighborhoods north of what's currently Fremont Drive if we're eliminating that road. I live in that area and the neighborhood, or the streets are not in very good condition. So have we, do we even have the ability to keep up with that volume of traffic as far as the condition of our roads?
Right, so that's, that's one of those other considerations. So we wouldn't design a project that's going to divert flow to Florence Street unless we have monies available in the project or separate money like two-way money in the future or something to make improvements to that street.
Okay.
It basically would move those streets to a higher priority versus other streets in the city because of a project that we're doing here.
Ms. Consales?
Okay, I have, I have a few things here. To kind of piggyback what Frank said, you know, working towards a goal and taking it in implements, isn't that kind of how we wound up where we are now with, with Fremont Drive how it is? It's just kind of evolved over time, but I guess it wasn't done on the plan. But I'm just, I, I think I'm a little concerned about, about doing it in stages like that. But I've had a lot of business owners come to me concerned that this won't help their business, that it'll, it'll, or decrease their business. How can I reassure them that this is going to be good for their business?
You know, I'm not wearing that hat and Ryan couldn't be here tonight. But what I've been assured of and been told repeatedly by the planners and the experts that are in that field is that who in the world would not want a direct access to the highway? That the frontage road actually impedes the values of those properties is what I've been told.
But not all of those businesses will have direct access to the highway.
Every single, every single, every single business will have a direct access to a public street or the highway in this plan. There are a few that will require some cross-property agreements or some that already have them. But there again, they will have the, the closest access to the highway, direct access to the highway than they have today.
Okay. And then my other question is, a few of the complaints that were in, in the complaint or the comment forms were about U-turns. Can you explain the U-turn procedure, what it looks like, and how it will keep traffic flowing?
Sure. So what this plan, you know, that was our biggest concern, I would say, when we started this process was when you put up a raised median across the highway like this, you can't turn left. Now, right now on the frontage road, it gives people full movement, but you, as I discussed at the beginning, we can't just punch all those roads through. So, you know, we're proposing U-turn movements for eastbound traffic at Gradyne and then for westbound traffic at Cottonwood. And then you would also be able to make those U-turn movements at, the two signals at Reynolds and at Orchard.
Okay.
The reality with U-turn movements is they're much safer than trying to make a left, if you, if we did say punch through all these roads and you just left a two-way turn lane down the middle of the highway, which wasn't an option that was on the table from CDOT's perspective, but if it was, making that left turn is a much, off of one of these side streets onto a highway like Highway 50 is, is a much more dangerous movement than making a right turn, going down a few hundred feet and just making the U-turn. Because when you're making a U-turn, you're only watching one direction of traffic. And it's, and when you have signals at both ends, like this corridor does between, at Orchard and Reynolds, those two signals create gaps in the traffic that we're not showing that that's going to cause any issue, that that's going to be an overly difficult movement to make. That's what our, our traffic models are telling us.
So U-turn is easier to make than a left turn, is what you're saying?
Yes, in these types of traffic conditions.
Okay.
Or under this configuration?
Yes, yeah.
Any comments in council?
I just want to clarify.
Sure.
We're approving the IGA that, that limits or specifically states the access points. That if we're going to change those access points, we're going to need an addendum or modification, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we are in fact improving the plan in terms of how access will be at Gradyne in the future. We're proving that right now.
Yes.
A master plan.
And that can't be changed without a modification.
Correct.
And we're approving that without any idea of cost to the city?
Well, well, we, we have costs, but it's not necessarily going to be a city cost.
You know, no, right, I'm right.
I, I think the point on that is the language in the agreement that says that this agreement does not create any financial obligations for any agency, including the city.
Right.
We don't have to fund a penny.
Right. The total, the total project for the one and a half miles is $30 million. That's the current estimate.
Coming out of the mayor's budget.
Anyone else?
And what's that fund, that slush fund over there?
You know, I think, I know what you're talking about if we approve this. In a sense, we got to look at it this way, okay? Also, we've had complaints forever about the Highway 50 corridor, okay? All right, now, if we don't do something with this now, the complaints aren't going to get any better, they're going to get worse, okay? To me, this has a way of solving some of the complaints. It'll never get rid of anything, okay? There's, there's no way you're going to accomplish that. But this has the potential of getting rid of some of those complaints and to move on. But like they said, we can approve this now, and if we don't do nothing with it for the next 10 years, we're not committed to actually do something, but at least we got a starting point if we decide to do it, okay? And then all the other things come into play. Who's going to pay for what? How much money is coming from the city? How much money is going to come from CDOT for these projects, okay? That's all down the roadway. But this is our, our way of saying, I think this will help the Highway 50 corridor be more improved than what it is now. And that's why I think the IGA at this point, I think is something that we should, we should go ahead and do. I'm, I'm in favor for it, right?
Anybody else? Well, mayor doesn't get to vote.
Unless there's a tie.
There's a tie.
Yeah.
I will tell you, if you want to start a, a problem with the charter or the constitution or whatever you want to call it, you cannot compel me nor will I sign this. So vote it in if you'd like, but it will not have my signature on it. That's how I feel about it. Okay? We didn't create this problem in Canyon City, CDOT did. You know damn well they did. Why should we commit, somewhere down the way, they're going to be coming to council and we need $2 million. Don't believe the fact that it just, oh, it's nothing, guys. It's not nothing. I've lived with master plans. I can tell you, you're going to impact every commercial person on that street. Try and sell that and they cite that master plan. There's no question in my mind that Adam or someone else is going to say, oh, by the way, we got the master plan. Now you've got to spend this extra money and help us put in a red light. And you know the offsites are going to kill them. So I'm telling you, you voted in, find another mayor. That's how strongly I feel about it. If you want constitutional or charter problem, try and compel me to sign it. See what happens.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, you may.
Would you just propose to leave it how it is?
No, I think you can take it off in smaller bites and make it more agreeable. Show me Orchard. Go down to Orchard that they created, we didn't create, and fix that. Make me trust that you're going to be able to do that.
I agree.
Try Orchard. I don't care where you go. But this plan, I've lived with them. They created a master plan and all of a sudden it's hunky-dory and your people come in and want to do something and they're going to have to show her an expense. It's going to have a chilling effect on, I don't care what they say. It will have a chilling effect on that commercial real estate because there's an overhanging master plan there that's going to be expensive to somebody. Show me some trust and I might sign it. Show me where you're going to fix Orchard. Give me a, give me a drawing. We didn't create it. CDOT did.
I move-
Want to take it to a vote?
Yes, I move that we adopt the access control plan for Highway 50.
Second?
Second.
Begging second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I mean, I, I take your point, Mr. Mayor. We may not have created the problem, but I think it's our responsibility to help fix it. And this plan is a way to fix the problem. We disagree, but that's all I have to say.
We'll see. Would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Nay.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Nay.
Let's move on. Thank you. There are people here that want to talk about number 17. I'm going to move that up ahead of the purchase of, I'm going to move that ahead of 15 and So let's call that up. Your land management, oil and glass, gas lease sale, sale and BLM dash CO dash 000 dash 2019 dash 001 dash other and EPA specialty, specifically the 8423 parcel of land. The impact of this lease sale and potential development on the extensive trail system both on and nearby this parcel. Do you have a report from the administrator?
Hey, Tony? He said 8324 and this says 8423.
Is that from the agenda or this, or the letter?
Well, the agenda.
8423. I have, I have 8423. That's what I said.
Okay. That's my thought.
Do you have...
I mean, briefly, this is simply a request by the BLM for input, our prospective lease of land, which is basically described as the Temple Canyon area, which includes Section 13. A lot of the trails have been built in the South Canyon for oil and gas exploration. So to that end, I know we have members of the public here that would like to speak to that. Our chief concerns are twofold, that we have no opposition necessarily to the production of oil and gas. We all need that. However, we'd want to make sure that it was sensitive to the investment that the community's made, that FAR has made, the BLM has made, to this extensive trail system for both our residents and our guests. And secondly, to be considerate of the potential impact on our newly constructed 2A roads, in particular Mariposa and North Furso. That's the essence of our concern.
Is this, what we're trying to do is stop them from leasing it? And can we...
No, no, just to raise our concerns. Again, we're not taking a proactive or an adversarial position on this. They have the right to solicit bids for the exploration of oil and gas on public lands. We're just saying that be cognizant of the significant asset of our trail system and the road investments we've made in that particular corridor and their consideration of this sale. That's all.
Okay, we have some people in the audience. Ashley, SAC?
Good evening, late, late evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak today. To the mayor's point, this is just a comment period. It opened on October 1st. The BLM opens up this public comment period. It closes tomorrow on October 16th at 4:00 PM. This is kind of a mutual concern, seeing how the city has put forth significant funds as have FAR, to help make these trails accessible and beautiful for our community. So with that, I'm going to try to read my statement so that I don't stumble. My name is Ashley SAC and I am the coordinator for Fremont Adventure Recreation, a local nonprofit dedicated to community health and wellness and trail construction and maintenance. I would like to convey our concern for the BLM oil and gas lease sale being held on March 19th of 2019. Fremont Adventure Recreation would like to make it clear that we are not categorically opposed to oil and gas exploration or extraction. We are, however, concerned with protecting the investment of our organization, community members, local businesses, and the city of Canyon City. Trails in the area have cost FAR alone in excess of $350,000. Now, that includes a significant number of grant monies that we have solicited and won. So that's FAR money, grant money, and also money that our local businesses have contributed through our 1% for trails program. So the community members have invested financially in these trail systems. So we would like to have, as this BLM sale potentially goes through, some sort of assurance that they will not be damaged or compromised before any sale goes through. It's with this in mind that we express our opposition to the upcoming oil and gas sale involving parcel 8423, known to our community as South Canyon Trails in the greater Temple Canyon area. To be clear, this is a new process for us as well. We at FAR have worked with the BLM extensively for access to these lands and of course the trail building process. So in researching this and asking questions of the BLM, we did learn that this is an anonymous process. So some entity has expressed an interest, an EOI, expression of interest, for this land. So they said, we want it. So the BLM goes through a process, and one of the first steps of this process is this public comment period. So we are just here tonight to alert the city council that this is happening. You, as an entity, as a government, are allowed to give a comment on that public forum. And I would be happy to provide the web address that you may do so, so that we can all express our interest in making sure that our trails are preserved as they stand now. I would also like to, since we are televised, I'd like to let the public know that they are also welcome to post any comments on that public forum, and that's on the BLM site. Again, I can give you that information. And again, the comment period closes on Tuesday, tomorrow, October 16th at 4:00 PM. So as I said, this is a process that we are learning as well. There are a series of steps that the sale goes through that involve also evaluating any environmental concerns, much like they do when we ask to build trails. We go through these processes as well, including environmental assessment. So all of those things will happen, but we did want to make the council aware that this was happening so that any silence would not be misconstrued as complacency. We have a very vested interest in this land and we want to see it protected. The land can be pulled from the oil and lease sale if any concerns are raised, if any environmental concerns are flagged, et cetera. So with that, I just wanted to let you know that it's ongoing and we welcome your comments and I thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Ashley.
Before you...
Any questions?
Before you leave, could you, could you give us that website?
It's a long one.
Oh, it is?
Can I email it to you? I apologize. I didn't know I could have the projector.
Okay.
You know me and PowerPoint. I can certainly email it to you. It's a lengthy one, but I can, I can post that in any forum that you choose or just a direct email to the council.
I received some kind of information from a bunch of websites.
I did get it. I don't know if it had the comment page on it, though.
It does.
Oh, it does, okay.
Never mind.
Okay, thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley.
Ashley?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Ashley, so the partial that's in question is 8423?
Yes, sir.
And the areas where you have concerns, is only a portion of that partial?
Yes. So we have no, we have no knowledge, A, of who wanted the EOI and what their, what their plan is. But yes, the concern we have is that they will damage the trail systems that exist within the parcel that is for sale. But certainly there are extensive sections of the parcel that we have no financial interest in, although we would hate to see those areas damaged so that we can preserve the pristine nature of that area, especially because it is so close to Temple Canyon.
So your request, at least from FAR's standpoint, would be to remove that section that has the trails from the partial, but is it also practical to at least ask that, or I don't know if it's practical, but that that lease would protect those trails? Not exclude them, the land, but at least make for sure that they weren't damaged?
That's an excellent question. And I don't have specific knowledge of how the BLM process works in terms of can they parcel the parcel? Can we make those stipulations? Can we ask that of the individual or the organization that requested the EOI? I don't know that. That's not a question I can answer, but that is an excellent question to ask of the BLM as we work through this process together.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, thank you. Randy Keller. Maybe we should put a timer, but...
No, I'm not timing. Just kidding. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and ladies, ladies and gentlemen of the council. First of all, I would like to thank you all for letting me speak this evening. I have been a long-term resident of Canyon City. I moved here in 1990. I've raised a family here. I lived within the city limits up to about five years ago. Five years ago, we bought a piece of property right in the middle of this area that is being looked at for oil and gas exploration. And the extensive trail system out there, one thing I would like to state is I have been very, very impressed with our, our community, our county, and everyone involved in the new trail system. Temple Canyon Park, in the five years that we have spent up on Temple Canyon Road, we have seen a tremendous, tremendous increase in hikers and bikers of the area, in our tourism of that area. We are very, very concerned with the impact of oil and gas exploration in this area. Temple Canyon Park, I think, is a tremendous concern. Our tourism, and, and I want to give kudos to Mr. O'Rourke for stating how critical tourism is to our community and how much revenue comes from the tourism that we are seeing. We've got a local Jeep tour company that runs numerous Jeep tours up through that area that I think will be affected. The residents of our area, of course, I'm here because of our residents' placement in, right in the center of this oil and gas exploration. But I feel that the residents of Dawson, if, if they knew about this, and the problem with this oil and gas exploration lease also, it was not, it was not, there was no press release sent out locally. From what I understand, the BLM always sends out anything of this nature locally. This was sent out on October 1st in, I believe it was, in Lakewood, Colorado, is where the press release took place. So needless to say, our local residents are not even privy to this oil and gas lease happening or being able to be voiceful with these concerns by 4:00 tomorrow. I, I think the impacts, of course, are going to be Temple Canyon tourism, our hikers, our bikers, the property values of Dawson Ranch, the residents of the area, the wildlife within the area, the money that has been invested, as was stated by, by FAR, and of course, just the views of our local community. I feel our, our community has taken some tremendous steps here lately. We were seeing new businesses come into our community. I feel like we are moving forward right now, and I would hate to see us take a step backwards with possible scars to our community or scars to the views of our community. I would just respectfully ask that the council maybe consider writing a letter to the BLM or at least a response to the BLM, asking them to withdraw the oil and gas lease, or at least to consider possibly pushing it, this back a little bit and publicizing this locally to where the community has the opportunity to even know this is going on. So just here, of course, just, just like the FAR group, to at least bring this to your attention because it came to our attention very late also. And I think that if our community realized what was going on right now with this oil and gas lease right above Dawson Ranch, which by the way, goes right up against the private property in Dawson Ranch, that you would see many, many more people in this audience wanting to speak. So I would appreciate any support that you might give our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions, Mr. Keller?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is it John Stukowski?
Stukowski.
Stu?
Stu, yes.
Stu, all right.
I want to say thanks so much for getting this on the agenda. I know it wasn't on there last week, and I'd sent some of you some information, so I really, really appreciate it. I know it's a very quick turnaround, and a lot of that's based on that BLM 15-day time period. My name is John Stukowski. I'm the conservation director for a regional conservation organization, Wild Connections, and I'm working with other conservation recreation organizations across the state, as this is a statewide BLM lease sale for March. So there's other parcels of concern, but this is one of the more specific ones and kind of more egregious lease proposals in the state right now, along with one in Palisade. And they also had that on their agenda for last week and I think are writing a letter in opposition for, for their area and their city. But it's kind of basically, yeah, this land is located between that Dawson Ranch neighborhood and Canyon City Temple Park, surrounded by, you know, BLM and Forest Service, a land, a lot of it natural land. And I'm saying like, BLM has a mission for multiple use, and we have a great working relationship with the BLM Royal Gorge right down the street. But it doesn't mean that there's every use in every area. This area already has multiple use. It has hiking, it has biking, it has bouldering, it has hunting, it has fishing, and not all uses are compatible with each other, and oil and gas is not necessarily compatible with all these recreational uses, especially these primitive recreation. So one of the things I want to kind of note, Ashley did a great job talking about the recreational values, and as I'm sure a lot of you already note, and again, as your city minister, Mr. Tony O'Rourke, had mentioned, the commitment and the investment in recreation and tourism in the city, with Temple Canyon being one of those areas. But in just addition to kind of those recreational values, this area has great conservation values. It's adjacent to BLM's Grape Creek area of critical environmental concern, you know, for qualities, for scenic and visual that were mentioned, for qualities of flora and fauna, specifically bighorn sheep and peregrine falcon nestings. Part of it's contained within CSU has a program called the Colorado Natural Heritage Program that identifies areas of biodiversity, high biodiversity significance across the state. And this is basically a value of two of her very, very high biodiversity, based in the Grape Creek riparian quarter and watershed, and some of this would go into that, into that area. And then just has very high habitat and range for a lot of wildlife species that was also previously mentioned. And this area, you know, not only adjacent to the AC/EC, just due south is the Tanner Peak Recommitment Wilderness Area in the Wet Mountains, you know, pristine BLM lands to the, to the east and to the north, northeast. And, you know, essentially, it's just a connectivity, connectivity area for, for this flora and fauna, as well as, you know, just a great area for, for recreation and scenic values. And I guess to kind of, kind of sum it up, you know, again, again, short notice, I guess our goal, and it's not unprecedented, but, you know, we'd like to see a response from, from the city council, whether it's a letter, a resolution would be ideal to depart these parcels. I know it's kind of quick, quick notice for something like that, of course. But essentially, like, I mean, if you all are at all concerned that there might be oil and gas leasing on top of these areas that you've invested, you know, a lot of money in your communities, that, you know, something at this, at this step would be very helpful for the city as, as this process engages. And kind of one last note, the BLM plan, many probably understand that the BLM is under a current resource management plan revision right now. The current draft, or the current plan goes back to 1996, and that's kind of what these leases are based off of. It doesn't take into account any of, like, anything new that's happened, so anything that maybe the city has done in the past 22 years. And their draft plan should be done in 2019, so the BLM should at least wait until they have basically all this, all this new information to make this decision. Thanks, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Stu?
I just have, I mean, I kind of wish I would have asked this of everyone who had come up, but has your organization then submitted a public comment to BLM during this comment period?
We're submitting them tomorrow with a bunch of other conservation organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I do have a question.
Mr. Hammack?
Thank you for coming. The, do you know the size of an exploration drill pad?
Do I know the size in general? What about, I'm not talking about that, that we're talking about like, not just that infrastructure, but, you know, using this Temple Canyon Road that you've invested money on too, you know, for, for recreation, for tourism. Now all of a sudden, you're asking if it's okay that, you know, they can make money off of Canyon City's investments? I mean, I understand that an oil pad might not, might not be large, but they're still using other infrastructure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I suppose, I have a letter here, and I guess you want me to...
City's investments? I mean, I understand that an oil pad might not, might not be large, but they're still using other infrastructure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I suppose, I have a letter here, and I guess you want me to sign this, or I haven't reviewed it. This is the first I've seen any of this. So I will review this and then look at the letter. I didn't write the letter, my name is on it. So I don't find that offensive at all, I just, I'm not going to sign it.
You're in a signing mood?
I'm not in a signing mood. I'll look at it. Thank you all for coming. I just can't imagine if we found gas and oil around this area, this wouldn't be a boom for us. Okay? I'll look at it and review it, and when do we have to have it in?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So it really does require the action of the city council, so it's, you know, the city council has to either move to ask you to sign it or not to sign it.
Tonight?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Meisner.
I move that we approve the mayor to sign the letter to the Bureau of Land Management stating the city's position relative to the proposed lease.
Second.
Motion's been named second. Any discussion on the motion?
Uh...
Ms. Meisner.
I know the letter's already been pre-created. Somebody raised a concern, I forgot what it was.
About the streets or use of the streets or...
No, something about a timeframe.
Use of the trail.
Yeah, I know. Wanted to add something to the letter, but I...
Are you talking about the notice? How the notice was not local, or?
Well, the letter addresses, I mean, could we maybe add a paragraph that would maybe also suggest that they extend this decision? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think you could, but I don't think it'll be relevant, though they're operating off of federal law and, you know, the gears are in motion. This is really an opportunity to simply weigh in with your concerns versus saying, "Stop the process." I don't think they'll, to be honest, will give any credence to that.
We're not saying stop, we're just saying...
Delay the process.
Give us two more weeks for public comment.
I think there's clear, specific federal standards for this type of process, and they're technically meeting them. I don't think they're going to hold up the train for us, to be honest with you.
Can I request three minutes just to read the letter?
Yeah. And Ashley drafted this letter, if you're interested.
Okay, why don't you read the letter? Let's move on while you're reading the letter. We're going to move on to number 15, or I'm going to have to take a restroom break. Let's move on to 15. This is for the purchase and sale agreement and lease agreement for 110 South First Street, Canyon City, Colorado. We invite the city administrator to...
Yes, this would execute the desire of the council to purchase the property at 110 South First Street from GUS, and also to provide a lease agreement so that he could reside at the residence for another six months, conditioned upon him paying the proportional property taxes at that time period, so he can get his affairs in order and sell some equipment, I think, along the lines of what we talked to the council about. So this would execute your desires and make this official.
And he has already signed the lease agreement?
Yes. I think, did you get a copy? Yeah, you should have gotten a signed copy from him.
I just got it tonight.
So it all requires an executed agreement from the city and your endorsement. Anyone want to thank Catherine? There's a lot of work that went into this. We want to thank our city attorney for putting this document together.
Ms. Meisner.
And this, this is an attorney-approved agreement this time?
Yeah, attorney-drafted agreement.
They drafted it, so, doesn't get any better than that.
It does, but...
Well, I mean, I have, we just got this tonight, I haven't had an opportunity to read it. Does anyone else have concerns with that? Or am I alone?
I mean, it would be nice to be able to review it.
Do we, what's our timeframe? Other than now?
So, in this agreement, closing is set for December 17th to meet all the inspection and title commitments. If you want to bring it back at your next meeting, we'd probably just push that out a couple of weeks, and we amend the agreement. That'd be the only change we'd make in the meantime, so.
Yeah, Caitlin needs to review that, I'm fine.
I mean, I don't want to vote on something I haven't even read.
Will compel you to do it.
Call me crazy.
Well, we could even bring it to a vision committee, or do we have to bring it to a regular city council meeting?
Well, you generally teach your, treat your vision committee meetings as only work sessions where you don't make any formal decisions, so.
Right.
But you could maybe have a special meeting in connection with a vision committee?
We have a 25-hour notice requirement. Technically, if you could read it between now and Wednesday, we could agenda this matter tomorrow, and legally, it'd be sufficient for you to vote on.
Right, we could do a special meeting with Wednesday.
No, just add it to your vision committee as part of the agenda.
You have a majority of council people there, so we can add it to the vision committee meeting.
No, you can't. You have a special meeting in conjunction with the...
Correct.
Technically, yeah.
Technically, yes.
City clerk, would that be fine? Give you until Wednesday?
Yeah.
And if you still have questions at that time, then we could defer it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll plan on doing that.
Before.
Wednesday. All right. We're getting somewhere here. Have you read the letter?
I have.
Comments?
I'm ready to vote.
You're ready to vote?
Can I? I just wanted to say, I think it's a very appropriate letter because it's not, it's not asking them not to sell it, it's not asking them not to come here, it's not asking them not to drill or find oil, it's just saying, please be respectful of the investments we've made in our community, and I think that's appropriate.
I agree. Okay.
My comments I want to make is, if the mayor says he's not comfortable with signing something until he has a chance to read it and all that, I think we owe him that opportunity to do that. And if this goes there, unless he's changed his mind, I'm going to vote against it. Let him read it, and if he thinks it's there, then he can sign it, you know? We shouldn't be telling the mayor on this particular thing what to do. That's my feeling.
Yeah, this is the second, how many times has this come up this evening? And I probably don't have no problem with it. I can look at it tonight and have it down to you in the morning. That's all. The mayor may not agree with it.
Is it possible to just remove his name and just have it be from the council?
Another, the other opportunity would be to have Ashley as the mayor pro temp sign it. Effectively, the mayor is the conduit of the city council, he executes agreements. If you don't want to sign it, then someone else can sign it.
Why don't you direct me to sign it, and I'll have it, I'll have it into the office by Tuesday morning, and I'll have time to read it.
And I'll twist his arm.
And all the collateral paperwork. Okay? I'd like, it's been made and seconded?
Yeah. Yeah, it has.
Would you, and that's the discussion, so call roll.
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
For the reason I said, no.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, I will read it and have it down here in the morning.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Number 16, discussion of East Ridge Campground camping fee. This is continued from October 1st as recommended by city council. Do you have anything, Mr.?
Yes, the council on the first asked us to develop the campsite budget for these 21 campsites, which we've done. You can see, we've articulated the cost for peak season and off-season maintenance and year-round security, which we want to thank John, because it saves us a lot of money working directly with the Bridge for Security. So it was $43,471. We sat down, estimated based upon past history, the occupancy or usage rates at different times of the year, and came up with the projected 3,040 campsite usage rates. Simply divide the usage by the budget, and it comes out to $14.29, which that would just round that off and propose $15, which is slightly less than what the state charges for similar facilities at 18, not as much as the federal government at 20, and then certainly less than the private sector, which offer more amenities, to be truthful. So we thought this was a pretty sweet spot for consideration.
You are then proposing that we vote that in as a number? $15?
Yes, either now or during the budget, so we can plug that into our budget. So basically offsets the cost of maintaining the campsites. Historically, we have not offset the cost, nor have we made the investment we're about to make on those campsites. We think it's long overdue to get some return on the city's investment and at least have a break-even business plan for the campsites.
So if you bring this in, it'll be coupled with the improvements that will, the city will make, which we have budgeted for.
Yeah, over $40,000.
Okay. Ms. Gonzalez.
I just, I want to make a comment, because I've heard some people say that $15 is excessive. My family and I do a lot of camping, and I have paid quite a bit more for a lot less amenities. I think it's important to remember that we're paying for the, the safety and sanitary aspect of camping in a little bit nicer campground than you would in the woods. So I don't think that $15 is too much to ask. That's all, that's all my comment is.
Any other discussion? Mr. Meisner?
Yeah, John.
Mr. Hammer.
Okay. The, I, we have been talking about this. I think that, I think that my personal feeling is that a $20 fee is better with the provision that, that some accommodation be made for Canyon City or Fremont County residents who want to use the campground. I think it's important that we create vouchers or something, you know, that if, that if a person can show residency in the city or the county, that they can have a reduced-rate voucher for a campsite, subject to the time limitations that, that will impose. But I would suggest that we go with a $20 rate, and the reason I suggest 20 is because for sure then, we're not trying to compete or undercut our existing campgrounds. If we, if we charge less, we're going to get more traffic. If we charge more, we're going to get less traffic. It's, it's a kind of a non-competitive thing with our existing campgrounds. The practical reason I would suggest $20 is because it's almost, if you're going camping, it's almost impossible to take change with you. It's a lot easier to have a 20 than it is a 10 and a 5 sometimes. And so I would suggest 20 with the provision that, that residents, either Canyon City, probably Canyon City residents, receive some type of voucher or a reduced rate to be able to use those campgrounds. Because we're not trying to prevent citizen use, we're trying to regulate the, our visitor uses and get to some reasonable accommodation in terms of dollars that they are going to cost us.
Discussion, Ms. Coffin.
I respectfully disagree because, you know, I look at how much money we've invested in Centennial Park, and we don't charge admittance for people to use, you know, the splash pad and stuff like that. So I don't think that we need to necessarily be making money off of it. And 20 means we would be making money off of it. I think 15 is fair because we're breaking even and we're preventing extended stay from unwanted guests, which I think was the whole purpose of this. So I think 15 is fair.
So I would have a question for Harry. Harry, did you help develop the $43,461 number?
No.
No, that was Rex developed that based upon...
Is that a fully loaded number, or is that just direct?
Well, direct cost. No, it's not, doesn't cover overhead like myself or Harry and IT and all that.
Right, so this doesn't cover overhead?
Now it's triple that.
Even, yeah, right. Even if we charge 20, we're going to be losing money.
Yeah, no, these are direct costs. We...
So, so in other words, the direct costs are like materials, time spent, but it doesn't include insurance?
Toilet paper, cleaning up, that's what it covers.
Fuel to get out there, stuff like that.
No.
So even at 20, we're going to be losing money.
Well, and again, we're not asking for our citizens to pay every time they visit one of our parks.
And that's why it included the provision that our citizens would not, except for some minor fee.
Okay, we're quibbling over five bucks. Let's...
Well, or 15 bucks.
15.
What's the pleasure of counsel on that number? Or no number? Mr. Meisner.
I'm just telling you, the probability of somebody having a 20 versus 15, it's much higher probability. And you get into 15, and people aren't going to give you 20. So just from a convenience standpoint, I think you make it 20 bucks, or you make it 10 bucks. 15, I think...
Can they write a check?
Check's in the mail. No, you put a little credit card in the campaign.
Can we install some kind of credit card swiper?
We can put, we can bring an ATM up there.
Do a poll on 15 and then do a poll.
All right. Poll on 15. Who wants 15?
I think we got a majority.
Who wants 20?
I do.
You only need to vote one.
It appears, it would appear after the...
It's time the mayor gets a...
June's practicing, vote early and vote often.
After the, I won't sign on anyway. No, 15, looks like it carried the day.
That's why we're who we are.
All right.
So that'll be effective, you know, January 1st, and we'll plug in the projected revenue into the budget.
Tony, I would, I would at least suggest that, you know, on that little, you're going to have some kind of little cards there or something that people got to fill out of?
Yes, exactly.
That it have some kind of a simple agreement on it?
Similar to the state. Yes, similar to what the state does.
Says, you know, you agreed to, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, and it puts like locks and... Beautiful thing is, the security people will ensure collection every evening and make sure that, you know, people are complying with the camp rules. Their biggest concern is unattended fires, which has happened up there, so it's perfect. And I'm glad John recommended this to us, because it's a win-win for both the Bridge and ourselves to have their people involved.
Good job, John.
Ms. Turner?
You know, something you said just made me think of a question. Has, have we looked at or considered online payment?
I mean, technically...
I mean, that would solve the $15 dilemma. That people could pay ahead.
We'd rather just stuff their money like in a parking meter into the little slot, and that way we can be verified by the ranger that goes out there in the evening. If we do online stuff, then we got to have them access to this data, and we don't want to deal with that. We're trying to keep it as simple as possible. I think it's a good point, but we try to keep it just dummy-proof.
So...
Show me the money.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
The mayor's ready to adjourn, so you better get your question in.
I understand. So that, and it can be a quick answer, I hope. So what about the idea of some type of voucher for, for citizens? The, I see Tony's not, that looks like...
Does it make any difference to that, or the whole process involved there is kind of self-deprecating? Wouldn't you want to increase the price, offset that cost?
I think that adds too much work.
Yeah. When we try the first year, and we'll come back and say, hey, this is our experience, you know, getting the input from our residents, our outside visitors?
It's a good idea.
And then ask whether you want to make adjustments. We'll try this on the first year.
I mean... You could just do a free camping day, like we do at the gorge.
Yeah, we thought we'd do it January the 2nd.
Sign me up.
Do it, do it December 2nd.
We're heading downhill. Any other questions or comments? Good, we're adjourned.